Good evening. It being 7:03 PM on November 15th, 2016. This is the New Durham Planning Board. I am Scott Drayman, the Chairman. And as normal, we're going to go through our -- across our board here and introduce ourselves for you people watching at home. Start in the -- over here.
Laura Shufield, Administrator Assistant.
Okay.
Teri Shubal, Member.
Doc Vassell, Member.
David Swanson, Selectman Representative.
Okay. Bob Prekraft, our Vice Chair, has an excused absence tonight. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. If anyone in the audience tonight has an item to speak that is not on tonight's agenda, I will say before that that we have a potentially swearing-in of Jeff Allard as an alternate. That is not written on the agenda, but that will be our next item.
We need a -- yeah, we need a motion.
We'll need a motion for that. So that is an item that will be on the agenda. Any other questions? Okay. You have a --
Yeah, I just want to bring to the board's attention, we've got a potential problem with an industry that's booming in New Hampshire. And the board ought to be aware of it, but maybe ought to make some, you know, maybe might change some regulations not uncovered. It particularly involves these detached drawing units or attached drawing units, the second drawing units.
Accessory.
Accessory buildings, whatever you want to call them.
Right.
We have a problem, we have a couple, I have a couple in town now that are listed on Airbnb, which is an online internet site for advertising bed and breakfast.
Yeah.
I'm working with the Department of Revenue right now, the Hampshire Department of Revenue, to get -- because they're supposed to be paying rooms and meals tax and they're not. And this one in particular's been operating all summer. And I'm working with the Department of Revenue there. But we don't have any regulations against rental properties for short-term rentals. The state cuts it off at 160 days. If it's 160 days or less, it has to pay rooms and meals tax. If it's more than that, then they don't get involved. But my fear is that with these detached drawing units or auxiliary drawing units, that you're going to see people putting these up in rental during summer months, which -- for short-term rentals, which could be a problem. And we don't have any regulations against that right now, because the way the state RSA has written, there's no protection on that. And they do allow in Lakeside Residential, so it may be something the board wants to look at.
Okay. We were planning on addressing those units in the coming year, so.
Yeah, now on the existing, we have three or four, four in town now that are advertising in Airbnb. Now, the state law requires that if you advertise, you have to post, they have to have a license to run that business. So I'm going through the state right now, because we don't, you know, it's a rental property and we really don't address that as a business. Maybe something we want to look at ultimately when we do that. But I think right now the state's going to take care of most of that for us, most of that problem, but it's something that we probably ought to look at in ours only regulations.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll have to look that up.
And I was going to mention, I have those, I have particularly one of those, but I don't know if it can be done in public, some individuals, so we probably, maybe we should put it in non-public if that is, if that's concerning right now.
Is there a code enforcement violation?
Not really, I can't find them, no. That's the problem. And we don't, other than the fact that they've advertised a business. If, we don't define that as a business, rental property, but when you're advertising in an online service, I would consider it a business, but we don't really have a definition for that, so. But I, the state's got, the state does, so we're using the state RSA right now. If anybody's interested in that.
Well, if the state, what is the state RSA say if?
160 days or less, they have to file a business, they have to file a business plan, they have to have a license to operate that business, and they have to pay rooms and meals tax.
If it's used for that purpose for 160 days or less?
160 days or less, yes.
Short-term rentals. Then that seems like if that falls under the state law then, then they have to --
That's what I'm using right now, but I didn't know if the town wanted something over above that or. Because I, technically, I can't issue a cease and desist. I've got to go to the state and have them go through the Department of Revenue, which probably takes a while. I don't know how quick they can shut them down or what they can do.
You could probably send them a notice that they've been noticed and that the state's been notified.
Yeah.
You know?
Check.
Do that, you can say that much. The state has been notified, you need to be doing X, Y, Z.
Yeah, I'm, I'll check with the, I'll check with the Department of Revenue on that, because they may not want them to have, if they're watching this, they probably will see that pretty quick, but they have advanced notice on that, because if they pull down their sites or whatever.
Right.
It'll be an issue. We've copied them off, we have copies of them.
Okay.
But I just want to let you, I'll let you guys know that maybe something we'll put on.
Are the, are the owners aware of the issue?
Not yet, no.
To your knowledge?
No, we just, it's, we just uncovered it. I was tipped off by the neighbors because of the traffic.
You might want to seek guidance from someone at the state relative to what the obligations are for that. Make sure we're fulfilling the obligations for notification.
Teri?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up something, and I don't know if this is typical math either, but if it's, I think, something I'm aware of as well, then it could be something in the deed that says that the property can't be used for commercial.
If it was deed restricted, yes.
Yes. So then if it were that, then you would be able to enforce it? No, still no?
No.
We know that, don't we?
No, deed restrictions are court.
It would be a civil action by, by law.
Right.
I don't think you can tell if you're involved in that.
No, it's just like no two-story buildings on the lake. That's a deed restriction, but the only way to enforce it is if one owner sues another on the lake.
Right, it's civil court.
Okay.
Are all of these properties on the lake around the lake?
No, they're not.
No, okay.
They're actually spread out over the entire town.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Didn't there a forum coming up in November?
Yeah.
29?
I can anticipate seeing these auxiliary drawing units going up and this becoming a growing problem, that's all.
Right. Not really what their intended purpose was.
I know. Believe me, the state, we tried, our committee and the state office, we tried to change that and make it so the town could restrict it to certain areas in town, but it passed without those restrictions.
Right. But with our local regulations, maybe we can restrict that use. I don't know.
If we repeal what the state put in.
Yeah. We can look anyway.
We could file a bill to repeal that law and give the planning boards back their powers for the instance. Auxiliary.
They own the zone. You always had that option under the, what do they call it, for senior living. So planning boards have the power to always grant that on a condition basis. You don't have that anymore, so that's the problem.
Right.
But if we can nip, if it becomes, if we could say 100, if we say 160 days, which the Department of Revenue, then I could issue a cease and desist.
Right.
Before they act.
Right.
Because it's going to take them a while.
That's what I say, I think you should contact the state to find out what the obligations for notification are in the next process, the next steps.
Yep.
But if anybody's interested in reading that RSA for those rules, because the administrative rules, I don't have a copy of the rules yet, they're going to send me a copy. It's RSA 541A is the rule power, and then the actual bed and breakfast is 78A, colon 4A. If anybody's interested in reading that, I think the board may be interested in looking at that. Okay?
You can see legislation about the shield on, never was issued about this.
Well, there's been a lot of complaints.
Okay. Maybe you guys will fix it.
But I'm.
And we won't have to bother.
If you want to wait, that's fine, but if you're waiting, the state does.
Well, we're not going to be able to change at this point. We can't change this, we don't have the time now to change this for this coming March, so it's going to be a year anyway.
Okay. Okay.
But the only thing is that the town is more permissive than the state, and the state is actually silent about non-attached, that sort of thing. The state says we must allow an attached one, but we allow both attached and unattached.
Right. Okay.
But just, I don't know if you want to talk about, this is being hosted by the Eastern Lakes Region Housing Coalition, and it's entitled, "The ABCs of the New Law on Accessory Drawing Units."
Yeah. You should go see that program, it was actually an excellent program. And I'm going to give you just a little hint from the inside that the workforce housing people are supporting that, like I said. That's where it came from, that's where they actually came from.
Yeah, I saw Ben Frost is, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
He's on the panel, but it's November 29th up at the Sunny Villa Restaurant.
Yeah.
3:00 to 7:30, I'm going.
Yeah. You're going to go?
I'm going to go, yeah.
Great. I'll see if I can go also, but knowing that you're going, I'm just ready. Okay. Any other public comments? Okay. Next item on our agenda is appointment of an alternate, Jeff Allard. We were, we approved, made a motion last time, and now we need to go ahead and make that appointment.
The nomination was done last, two weeks ago.
Nomination.
The vetting period for the policy is done, and there were no negative impacts that I'm aware of.
Right.
Or comments, so.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jeff Allard as an alternate to the New Durham Planning Board.
Second.
Great. Any discussion?
Yeah, the only discussion is, I don't, is there a term date?
The term, I'm assuming, I mean, you can, this is our first alternate we have going, so I'm going to say three-year term. I think the next alternate, we should probably have a two-year term, so we end up having them stacked like our elections are.
It's in statute.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I think statute tells you that it's three years.
They're all three years, or?
Either of those, I believe, I.
I do, I do think that it may be three years from the date of appointment, which could alternate or sequence it.
Okay.
You know, by natural process.
We should be so lucky.
Okay.
I don't think you have to worry about it, you know, it took a long time to get an alternate.
Yeah, I know, I'm not so.
It might take another five years.
Well, the only issue is that I would have made that date as part of the motion, but I'm not aware that there isn't a term on that issue, so that's why I didn't make it part of the motion.
Okay.
I think we could cover that as a future point when we have that specific information, but perhaps.
Okay.
It's under 649.
You know, barring that, I might amend it to a three-year term.
It is a three-year term. You made that motion when you announced it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so.
So let me amend the motion to indicate, or add to the motion, amend it to indicate it's a three-year term.
Okay.
We'll need a second for that amendment.
A second for the amendment.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Of the amendment?
Of the amendment.
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And that carries.
Let me get Stephanie maybe to answer.
Yep. You want to go see Stephanie and be back in a minute.
Okay.
Congratulations. So now we can take care of the budget.
Sorry? Okay.
So whereas there is a vacancy for an alternate member of the planning board in said town, and whereas we, the subscribers, have confidence in your ability and the integrity to perform the duties of said office, we do hereby appoint you, said Jeff Allard, an alternate member of the planning board. And upon your taking the oath of office and having this appointment and the certificate recorded by the town clerk, you shall have the power to perform the duties and be subject to the liabilities of such an office. So then you would read this part and then you'd sign it.
I, Jeff Allard, solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as an alternate member of the planning board to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire. So help me God.
Okay. You can sign up there.
Sign and fill in the necessary information.
Yes. Just so you know, when you put your address and your telephone number and email in there, it becomes public knowledge, but I've never actually seen anyone from the public book getting these up.
Okay. So they can find me now.
Over the same days.
They will.
Somebody wants to know where you live, they can figure it out.
That's true. With Google, pretty easy.
Yeah. Okay. While he goes, go ahead and join him.
Yeah. You're seated.
Yep. When you're finished, you can have a seat at the table.
Yay.
Stephanie?
I'll sign this.
Yeah, you have to sign it too, isn't it?
For alternates?
I think I'm supposed to, I should sign it, right?
Well, we left out the alternates. Who's signed by the selected.
A little French.
Is that right?
No.
Oh, okay, good. Thanks. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, Scott.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, we had a huge conversation about this.
I'm still blaming you.
Still blaming you.
I'll take credit. Thank you.
So when do we applaud?
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Should be all three of us signing it?
Sure.
Okay. And you've got time, take your time. All right. And I will point you, Jeff, to sit in Bob's seat for the evening. Okay. As we send that around.
Oh, God.
Let's rearrange things a little bit. I should have said this a minute ago. I'm going to move up the CIP presentation and watershed district ordinance to the next two items. So CIP presentation, is there someone from the CIP committee that wants to give a report on that?
We have the Vice Chair.
Yeah? Doc, or Greg, or who do you want to do it?
Vice Chair is not going to do it.
It's up to you. I don't, I don't care who does it. Figure it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Shall I go, Greg? Should I go?
No, she wanted to do it.
Nope.
Figure it out.
I'm fine. Well, this year we have a new format for conducting our CIP review of our priorities. Our town administrator developed, people don't have a copy, but I will hold up.
Yeah, the rating sheet is in the report.
Developed a rating sheet, yes.
It's in page six, numbered page six at least.
If somebody wants a copy to look at.
Which looked like this, and we had to fill one page out for each of the CRFs, for each of the requests for funding, make up the CIP, and we gave weighted scores. He then took all of our weighted scores on every single project, analyzed, configured them, analyzed them, and wrote a report which really determined what we kind of as a collective body assigned as the highest priority to fund for next year. Ordinarily, the last year, I've only been on the CIP once, we just went through every item, decided a certain amount to fund that item the following year. This time, we prioritized the top 12 to 15 items, and those are the items that got our critical attention. The rest, we felt, could be dealt with next year. So that's why, you'll see, it's a lot thinner and looks a little different from previous CIPs. This was a test run.
Okay.
You can see our rating scores here.
Yeah. Going to make one recommendation for an edit on this score ratings, page seven, that the ratings, the rankings be ordered correctly. It jumps around in the first 10. Just a minor typo there, just to rate them, just to get them sorted correctly.
I don't know why he did that either.
I don't, yeah, I don't know where he sorted this by.
When he passed the math, they were, yeah, okay.
Just get it 1 through 10 instead of 1, 2, 8, 9, 7, 6.
3, 5, 4.
Huh?
3, 5, 4.
Yep.
Right.
So you've got the rescue, I'm just going to list them off for the audience so people understand, the Rescue Pumper 2008.
Right, so when you look at the Rescue Pumper 2008, and you can see that each one of us assigned that score above 50, so that obviously became our top priority to fund for next year.
Do you know what? I see what, I just see what, I see what he did. He ranked it by the score, not the ranking. So I'm a little puzzled where the ranking comes from versus the score.
Right.
I guess that's my next question then. Because it's sorted by the score.
Right.
The total numbers that everyone gave each item.
This would read 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Maybe. If you look at the score, it's in order.
Right.
But I don't, I don't know why the ranking and the score are not in the same order.
Why they're in the same order? I don't know.
No, I, you know, again, I wasn't at all the CIP meetings, I was at a very large number of them, most of them, I think I missed one. I think the score was what you see on the score in the ranking, but I think they went back and reprioritized based on other inputs, other considerations, et cetera. Greg, you can help me out if I'm incorrect there, but that's what I recall happening.
Yeah, I mean, this, the key for this is, we wanted the top 22.
Right.
And that was what we thought was the most important at this time. And so the ranking here, you could either go by, which it does go by the scoring, but it also goes by importance also, so there was additional input on certain items.
Yeah, I think Scott factored in the amount that was in the fund already, how close it was to goal.
Okay.
What the replacement year was indicated.
Right.
I think he factored.
Other considerations.
Right, just the, yeah.
The presentation by the department head, what kind of information he brought, or she brought to bear on the issue.
Okay.
But I know Scott worked very hard researching the different facets and really brought us in.
Right.
A completed proposal, well, anyway, a completed proposal with a recommended, a suggested and recommended amount.
Okay. Okay. Because one thing I noticed, the first item is the 2008 Rescue Pumper, just a fire truck. Town Hall Energy Upgrade is the second ranking. And then the third ranking is the 2014 F-250 pickup with a plow. I'm a little puzzled as to why something only a couple of years old is up for replacement.
I think because it was a lemon.
Excellent.
And I think that was a strong, I think that was a strong recommendation of the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Yeah.
What does that RA mean beside it with plow?
Uh, I get it.
RA.
Sorry. Ask Teri, I didn't hear what you said.
I was asking Doc what that meant.
What the RA?
Beside the RA, beside the plow.
I think that's how it's listed on the.
On the charts?
I know, yeah, on the charts, because as I know, E1 is engine 1, C1, yeah, that's how it's listed on the charts.
Just as a quick point, Scott.
Yeah.
Because it is 1, 2, 3, 4, et cetera, does not mean that those will be the actual purchases for next year. That's just, we're suggesting priority.
Getting their money.
Yeah. So just because it's 1, 2, 3, 4, doesn't mean it'll actually be purchased in 2017.
True.
It's just the monies that are put into it are in that order of importance, according to what their outcome was.
Because the highway department is predicting that that truck is not going to last its projected lifetime.
Correct. That's, that's.
That's why its priorities have been bussed up.
That's the point here.
Okay.
This ranking is mainly what we felt that these particular vehicles, trucks and so forth, we need to keep in the town's inventory.
Right. I just noticed that that was a new item, and it seemed out of place.
Yes.
Being a third rank, that's what I caught.
Well, they, yeah, we looked at that, and this truck has had quite a bit of expense of replacing, somewhere in, over $25,000 to this point on that one particular vehicle.
Is there a warranty involved?
And in fact, you know, one truck that is older, he recommended keeping and instead replacing this one, because he said the older truck is in much better shape, is much more reliable, and he felt had many more, not many, but had more years left in its life.
Okay. All right.
This is a truck.
What?
It's a freight line that had $25,000, no one's worked on it, and by any pickup, $25,000.
Yeah.
A state grade, so I think that might be a transcrution problem. That's a, that's just a heavy duty pickup. Freight line was a big, big cost last year.
Does the chart say that?
I'm trying to find RA on the chart.
So, does the chart say that the $25,000 that Greg just mentioned, is that, does chart say where that money is?
That's what I'm spiting, the freight line.
Okay. Well, that's, okay, that's different.
Yeah.
That's the.
What do we have? Let me find.
300 and 08.
Yes.
If you look on the last page spreadsheet, that is how it's described, 14 F-250 pickup with plow, parentheses, RA, end of parentheses.
I think we need to focus back on why we, what we were scoring here. We were scoring the importance of the vehicle.
Yeah.
Whether it's an old vehicle or a new vehicle, the importance of keeping it in the inventory, that's what the scoring was about.
Well, that doesn't fit the upgrades, so I mean, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say it was the importance of keeping it in the inventory, it was assigning it a priority for next year.
Right.
I don't think we were making a decision.
That makes, that makes more sense. Yeah. That makes more sense to me.
That's what I indicated before, it's where the monies are prioritized.
Well, actually, the retention period.
Yeah.
We're not replacing all these next year.
Understood. No, understood. Yep. That makes sense why, like, the, the two police cars, the 2013 and 14 interceptors are ranked 8 and 9, but they're new vehicles.
Right.
So it's still a top 10, we need them, but it's going to be a few years wet.
In a 10-year period, we were looking at this, the importance of the vehicle in 10-year period.
Right. But it was important to keep throwing money at them every year, so when they are, do expire, we'll have the money to pay for them.
Well, going back to the page, uh, we looked at a, a new funding. And if you go back to page four, last paragraph, this committee has identified alternative sources of funding, vehicle for spending, which we felt this is very important. And number one was renting, or renting for a short term. Number two was leasing for a long term. Three was not purchase, which is down payment from a CRF account with remaining amount coming from the general fund ranging from a five to ten-year period.
Right.
And then number four was a purchase, which is full payment at the time.
Right.
And then number five is contracting out, if someone else has supplied the vehicle or equipment, which, which is very important, because this is, this is a new direction.
Yeah.
That we wanted to, and this is, we talked, we had ten meetings, and a lot of the meetings were on this new venture of not doing purchases like we used to, where you pay the full amount, you, you raise the money, then pay the full amount at the time you need it. We're now looking at alternative ways not to do that, not have these big funds, CRF and so forth.
Right.
Just for point of clarification, town has actually done that for many years. Some lease purchase, rented or leased out equipment that has done it. These aren't really new, but they're suggesting that to take a relook at them.
Right. The last fire truck was done, which purchased that way. Um, I guess I have a concern about that, because if you're gonna not use the CIP funds to make payments on major purchases.
You can't make payments.
You can make, you can use it for a down payment, but the payments come from a general fund that you, that we suggested over five, ten years.
Well, all right, you're not using the CIP to purchase the vehicle.
CRF.
The CRF. The CRF.
Is for the down payment.
That's the new way. That's your new way.
Well, we, yeah.
That's not how it has been in the past. It is, in the past, it has been, the CIP plan adds money to the CRFs annually, and when a vehicle or piece of equipment fails or needs to be replaced, it is purchased with money in the CRF.
That's correct.
We have, we have done lease purchase though before too.
Right. Um, what bothers me is if you're only using this, the CRFs to make the down payment, and you're then using the general fund to make payments on those equipments or vehicles, what's the point of the CIP plan in the first place? It, to me, it's a major step away from the entire purpose of the CIP, which is to budget, plan ahead, to make all, to have money available to make these big purchases.
Right.
If you're not, if you're only using the CRFs to make the down payment, then now the general fund budget is gonna be going up and down as these different major payments have to be made over the lifetime of the new vehicle.
And you're quite right, Scott, that was exactly.
It's a very big change.
Why people voted in the CIP.
The structure of the CIP program, that is a major change.
That's right.
And I don't like it, to be honest. I just, it seemed that it's taking, it's taking away the entire purpose of the CIP plan, in my opinion.
There, the, there will be some time to invite purchase something out. But what we're looking at here, and the majority of the CIP committee said over the next ten years, we should look at these alternative directions. You've already done it with the fire engine, you've done it with the grader and so forth, where you've done lease purchase. We're just expanding that and saying, rather than have this large amount of money, uh, sitting in the CRFs and so forth, we're saying we're, over the period of time, we're gonna start reducing that, because most of that now is going to be, if we do purchase something, it's gonna be a lease purchase. But we're now saying we also have to have alternatives to, and this, this is what we had mentioned here, leasing some of the equipment.
Right.
Or, or even, we're also looking at contracting out equipment.
Right.
And that's completely different. Contracting out is something that we're looking at into the future. And, and that's our blending idea of, of, of some of the plows and so forth. We're purchasing those, we're now going to contract out some of the legs to be done. So it, it is, it is a different direction. A lot of towns are doing this now. They're not putting back these large amounts of money to just sit there and wait for a large purchase. We wanna go with the idea that there are alternatives, and that's where we should be starting to hit. And that's, that was what the majority of the CIP wanted to do.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I'll give, I'll give you a minority response to that.
Sure.
And we were the minority. Um, I went in completely against ever leasing or whatever, cause that's just my personal ethic. Um, I listened, and I agreed to the wisdom of leasing some of the larger expense items. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't.
Lease purchase.
Yes, lease purchase. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't commit a certain amount every year to reduce the impact on the general fund.
Right.
When that purchase needs to be made. Um, I just feel that the CIP, and I remember the year it was brought in, it was brought in to mitigate those peaks, valleys in the tax rate.
Right.
The fact that you lease purchase doesn't mean that you're not going to pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, it just means that you haven't saved up for it, but.
Right.
And you're paying in interest. You're not only paying, you may, not only paying the expense of buying it, you're also paying interest on it. Um, so that was the minority opinion on that. I'm not saying that, um, we need to save entirely every single purchase. I think, um, lease purchase is the way to go for very large items. But I still think we have a responsibility to put this, put this aside. Also, um, if you came, a lot, a lot of the discussion was over highway equipment, and you remember the forum we hosted for the master plan? That was very well attended and very adamantly stated that members of the community support the level of service that we have from our highway department. They really want that service level continued, and they wanted that included in the master plan. That was one of the things that was really noted that evening.
Scott, after attending, as I said, virtually all of them, as I said, I missed one, one or two when I was on travel, but attending virtually all of them, um, looking through some of the report here, I, I prepared a four-point comment, which, if you don't mind, I think might be worthwhile to think about. Some of it has already been talked about, actually, you mentioned one of the points.
Sure, go ahead. I guess before you start, I'm just, my general, my, my question and comment may be part of the same thing. Um, has the CIP or is the plan in the future for the CIP to develop a, a way to prioritize or make a decision on what kind of a purchase is a rent short-term, lease short-term, lease purchase, purchase full payment? Especially those two.
Touches on some of the points I.
Especially the, how do you decide between a lease purchase and a purchase full payment for a piece of equipment?
Well, we're looking at the larger piece of equipment now being on lease purchase.
Okay.
The, the point here still is that if, on the purchase side, you still need a CRF to do the purchase.
Right.
So, you know, you touched on, you touched on a lot of my points here.
Another one of my comments is how are those decisions are gonna be made?
If I, if I may, uh, go ahead with the four points.
Sure, let, let Swetman Swenson go first, and then you can comment.
Okay. Well, here, here are the points that, that I generated, as I said, attending virtually all the meetings as well as looking through some of the report here. The CIP recommendation is do not adhere to the New Durham Master Plan. Specifically, the recommendations for highway equipment do not have a longer range strategic view, nor has the full financial impact comparison with outsourcing. Renting, leasing versus ownership and/or lease purchase approach have, have been, they've not been fully developed. And I would suggest you see the transportation, town services, and other sections of the master plan for that, that conclusion. Number two, the CIP process this year and the recommendations made for 2017 essentially make policy for the town contrary to the CIP objective. As an example, by eliminating funding for ongoing needed equipment in highway department and others, the CP, CIP makes a policy to no longer sustain highway operations under its current structure. This action preempts Board of Selectmen action by dictating how the public works, i.e. highway department, can operate with what equipment and at what service level. Number three, additionally, the CIP recommendations for 2017 do not provide continued lower peak fiscal impacts, and I think that's the point you were making, on any given year. While it may reduce warrant article tax rate impact for this year, i.e. 2017, their short-term view and recommendations this year may cause drastic tax rate increases when replacement highway equipment and other equipment will be needed approximately two to four years out. This not only derives from not properly funding current capital replacement, but CIP report recommendations have been made without the requisite financial and service level comparative analysis between costs of lease, last purchase versus straight purchase versus rent as needed versus outsourcing. Future planning boards, budget committees, and boards of selectmen will likely have to make that difference up from lack of funding this year, causing unnecessary higher peak taxes in the not-too-distant future years. Finally, the CIP report for this year was approved by the majority of the CIP committee, with all of them, without all of them having seen the final CIP report that was voted. Various edits and other changes were made after that vote, and several spreadsheets were deleted and or added without the full CIP committee seating or approving the final version.
Right.
So there, yeah, so there are some, you know, those are my four major concerns at it. That doesn't mean that what they've done is not something that should be looked at. All I'm saying is I have some major issues of the approach, because it has serious implications in a broader term than what one might normally think.
Right. I'm particularly bothered that the report was approved before it was.
Well, that, if I may speak on that, that's.
I mean, let, let me just ask the question first. The night that the report was voted on, I assume the committee went through the draft report and made some changes. Were any other changes made, made that weren't decided upon before the vote to approve the plan was made?
I can't answer that. I don't know. Alls I know is that, I mean, I assume you asked me that question here, for now.
I guess I'm asking.
Alls I'm assuming, you can ask Doc, she was a member of the CIP, she has more knowledge than I do on it. I just, these are my observations as a resident attending the CIP committee. Um, the, I know that the spreadsheet that was originally in, the one that was voted, was asked to be replaced. I don't know what impact that had, it may not have had a serious impact, I just don't know. I know there was wording changes that were asked to be made. I didn't understand, uh, from what was described, what those, all those wording changes were. And the report that I understood at that final meeting was voted as the one that was approved.
Okay. Did you answer those questions any better, Doc?
I can explain the wording changes. Um, in the first document, it said, um, for example, the CIP agrees that, and there would be a statement that funding be for whatever.
Okay.
Um, and I requested that all of that language be changed to the CIP committee recommends, because we're advisory, and we, we can't set policy, we're just advisory. Um, and I was told that all, someone would go through it and take, take all of those statements out.
Okay. That, that, she, that edit was made before the vote, is what I'm trying, what I'm, what I'm concerned about. Any, were any edits to the document made after the vote that were unknown to the committee before the vote?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'm just.
I don't know. I suggested as a public input that they have another meeting to vote on the final document, but they declined to do that, which is their priority.
Okay.
May I please speak to that?
Sure.
When we sit, when I put the draft together, we sat down and spent a long period of time when we looked at each page, I read each, where each in the entire packet.
Okay.
There was a recommendation that had been brought up tonight, that the term should be, the CIP committee should recommend.
Yeah.
So I, so that was approved, that where the term recommend should be used rather than another terminology, that we would, we would do that.
Okay.
Uh, Tony felt that the last page, which was the spreadsheet for the vehicle equipment replacement list, he wanted the, we had two that we had looked at, he wanted the other one. Negro, they both are basically the same. One has more information and really not the information that really is what we were wanting to have, and that was replacement years. And so that's the document you're seeing now.
Okay.
Those were, those were the changes that were made.
Okay.
And everybody agreed to those changes. And so we did, we, we didn't, they did approve with the amended, the changes, which a lot of the boards did without seeing the final draft, as long as they're a simplistic type of change.
Right, okay.
And those two were very simplistic, and the board felt that way, and so those changes were made. And then I sent out the final copy to, to the CIP, uh, committee. I sent a copy to each member of the planning, and a copy to the board's flat.
All right.
I mean, I drew the other three points more key than that fourth.
Right.
I thought it was important for at least how everyone understood what was the situation as I saw it.
Um.
Well, we did address that. We did address the idea that we started by the grader, one of the pieces of equipment in the fire department, going to a purchase, lease purchase type, rather than full out purchase. And that was one of the recommendations that we thought would be the new direction or the direction we should continue to do. But we also brought up the fact that we were looking at blending, um, and the blending is contracting out some of our services. The equipment, which we would not pay for the equipment, nor we have the upkeep of the equipment. That would be a savings for the taxpayer. We also looked at, you know, rather than buying a piece of equipment that sits there ten or eleven months out of the year, and they only use it a month or a month and a half, rather than purchasing a piece of, of equipment like that, that should be rented or leased.
Okay.
And the example being, we've done it twice now. Uh, we, we leased out for a month a excavator, a large excavator, and that did the digging of the pulvers.
Okay.
Rather than pay for a new one.
Right.
So that was, uh, two years earlier than that, our grader went down, the assembly went down. They couldn't fix it, so we rented a, a grader to do the, the back pushing of the snow.
Right, that platter.
Yeah, and went by your house and that kind.
Yep.
So we rented the grader. So what we're trying to do is, is do kind of a new direction in that, this idea that you just purchase the full amount, raise the money and sit on the money. We wanna start looking at these pieces of equipment, do we need these pieces of equipment? If we don't need them, even though the money's there, and that's what happens, when you raise these large amounts of money in our, you know, people wanna spend it. And sometimes it's better to, to go in with the idea of a rep, lease purchase, or just a straight-out lease for a month, or even contracting out the equipment. So that's really the direction we're going, and we spent some time on that, and I spent some research on that, booking in other towns that are now going in that direction. And so thi- this was well thought out, it wasn't, you know, by the seat of our pants.
Yeah.
But, but we do have this idea that when you do even a lease purchase, the down payment can come from the CRF.
How much of that town, how much would the down payment be? What percentage of the cost?
You can do whatever you want. You can do twenty-five percent, fifty percent, whatever you have.
I think some, I think I asked that question because I don't, I don't just totally disagree with the ideas of what you're proposing. We've been talking about contracting snow plow services out for a couple of years now. But I think the detailed criteria, when you make these decisions, needs to start, needs to be better developed with more specificity.
Well.
Under, you know, under what conditions, what kind of equipment do you say you rent out? Something that you only need to use once a year in the spring to maybe grade the dirt roads in town, some kind of equipment like that? You know, a specific, you reap a specific purpose that only happens once a year? Or is it some, you know, how do you develop those criteria to make those decisions?
Yeah, several, we, we bring in the road, if, if you're talking about highway department equipment, you bring in the road agent, you sit down and he does a plan out, you sit down with our town administrator, you sit down with board of selectmen. And they sit down and, and work this out.
Okay. That needs to be done, that's what I'm saying. It's not in the report.
No, and it really isn't the CIP necessarily for those final decisions on how much you're gonna put down on a lease purchase. That really goes to the selectmen, town administrator, and the department head.
Okay.
That's not a CIP, uh, responsibility.
It, well.
And then when you get, when you get four years, four or five years down the way, and a vehicle comes up for replacement, you then examine it a little bit more carefully. Do we really need this piece of equipment? Do we wanna just purchase it outright, or is there a better alternative? And that's the direction we wanna start going. Now, this idea that you, you will have a payment over a five or ten-year period, it, it reduces the amount, it lessens it over a, a period of time. So there's not one big hit one year, it's, it's over a period of time, and the state allows you to be set awry for the interests and so forth, like other towns do. So we, this was well thought out, this wasn't just, you know.
No, I'm not saying that, I just.
So, so, you know, and we examine other towns that are doing this and being very progressive on this. So we're, we're saying that this is not only something we should, or looking at, but we should be doing it. And that's what this ten-year plan we did here. We want this to go in a different direction than raising these large amounts of money and just having that money sit there. And, and sometimes you might not need a piece of equipment, so it just keep, just getting building and building and building. That, that's, you know, that's something that we didn't think was, was, that we wanted, we wanted to change that thinking, that we just purchase everything outright. We wanna start looking at lease purchase, or just leasing a piece of equipment for a short period of time, because that's all you really needed. Or even contracting out equipment.
Right.
And that's, that is a savings to the town, and that's what we're looking at here.
Well, that may be a savings to the town. It's still not developed in any documentation that I see here. I don't see a comparison between that in this report, so I can't say that, cause I don't have the numbers or data to say that.
Let me, let me make a quick comment.
Does not save money.
Yeah, let me make a quick follow-up, and it's a repeat of what, one of my points was. I, I have no doubt that the CIP did some thinking in terms of what they would like to see based on their agenda, that they would like to have the town do. And then they, their ideas, I think, had, you know, some discussion too around the CIP. The issue that I have, quite frankly, is something that you kind of touched on, and that is the CIP, you know, it's a repeat of what I said. The CIP report recommendations were made without requisite financial and service level comparative analysis between the costs of lease purchase versus straight purchase, versus rent as needed versus outsourcing. So my, my comment is that, not that they didn't do some thinking on it, I would take a little bit of issue in that it wasn't well enough thought out to preempt other decisions from boards and.
Well, none of the other CIP committees ever did that. When we lease purchased out the grader, that wasn't in any of the CIP that we'd be doing that. When, when the fire department decided a particular vehicle, we're going to lease purchase rather than purchase outright, the CIP didn't get involved with that.
That's exactly my point. That's board of selectmen action.
Well, that's why I said earlier, that's exactly what it is.
Okay. I guess I'd like to address the comment that we have a pile of money sitting there. If that really is the, and we need to look at our life expectancy, expectancy projections. Because if you expected a piece of equipment that a cost, that costs $800,000, is going to need to be replaced in 25 years, you divide that amount up over 25 years. It's sitting there, ready to be spent, but it's, come the end of 25 years, we've got the whole amount.
Right. And it is earning some interest, although it's very low amount.
Hopefully maybe more now. The, and if you have one piece of equipment that you purchase, or make a large purchase, and you're paying the interest on that, and that even a tax, a tax rate. Following year, you're going to have another large piece of equipment.
Right.
Just because you're not saving for it doesn't mean that the bill isn't going to come to you.
Right. I mean, it's, it's a choice in how, it's a choice in economics.
Exactly.
For, for a homeowner, it works the same way. If you either save money to buy a new car in three years, or when you need a new car, you buy it and make payments. You, that's just a choice you have, and same thing with, with buying a new house or something. You don't, people that want to buy a new house don't just, you know, they save up for as big a down payment as they can, if not all of it, if possible, before they make that jump.
The lease is more.
Because paying, paying cash.
Buy the cost of money.
Paying the cash done is cheaper than paying cash plus interest on a loan payment. So that's the, that's the purpose of the CIP, is to save money over the long term by putting a few bucks aside for the different pieces of equipment every year. So you get a steady progression of the budget, instead of sharp up and downs, because you haven't saved any money, now you need a $300,000 fire truck, and you have to pay it off in five years. Even though it lasts 20 years, you can be saving with the CIP plan for 20 years to pay for that fire truck, little balance every year. Or you can do a five-year lease purchase, which is a much bigger chunk that you have to pay out in five years versus saving over 20. That's the.
There, there was no large amounts of money when they lease purchased the last fire truck. There was no large amounts of money when they did the grader. So that's, when you do a five, 10-year period, it could be longer if you wanted to. But you put, what we said in this report, if you read it, we said that you'd be putting a larger amount of money, and that's why we set aside, but we went in detail, we put more money down, or give more money towards the CRF for the fire trucks, because those are bigger expenditure. Still with the idea that you're going to not buy it outright, that you're going to do a lease purchase. With, with the equipment in the highway department, those compared to fire trucks are, are a small amount of money, $100,000. So you'll put down a smaller amount of money for a down payment, and then the remaining will do over a five or 10-year period. So that's if you decide to buy a piece of equipment. You might be at that time saying, we are now going to be contracting out, so we don't need this. The money that we were going to save for this particular truck, we're not going to purchase that truck because we're going to contract out that draft. So now you have all this money sitting around that you've taken from the taxpayers that you don't need, and that's what.
You have to pay the contractor instead.
Yes, so that can.
So it's not like all the money goes away. You still have to spend some money to get the roads plowed.
It's for a short period of time where you're not going to need these vehicles, and these vehicles sit around for nine months. That was our point. And that's our point that we've missed, I think, over the years, that we have these vehicles sitting there, the majority of time not being used. And that's what we've got to get away from. And this was well thought out, and it goes beyond just, you know, now, fire trucks use year-round pretty much. You know, they don't sit all summer long, fall, spring, and so forth, where your plow trucks do. So we've got to start looking at blending, which is contracting out or leasing short periods of time where you use these vehicles a short period of time. That's what we're looking at now, rather than purchasing everything outright.
Yeah. Doc first?
Yeah, I, I closely questioned the head of the public works, Department of Public Works, and asked specifically about the plow trucks and the grader. He uses the grader all year long, at least twice a week. The big trucks are on the road twice a week. If they're not plowing, they're hauling gravel, they're, they're doing road construction. The equipment is put to use. I mean, he says his equipment is working. He's the man doing the job. So I accepted his word.
Okay. What kind of input did the public works director give to this plan?
He wrote up a, in fact, a little booklet, I didn't bring it tonight, a little booklet, defending each piece of equipment in his garage down there.
Okay.
Citing the use, hours used, the days used, the multiple, you know, the variety of functions that he used them for. I think he presented a really comprehensive, complete defense of his requests and use of his equipment.
Okay.
Which we looked at and considered that.
Yeah, David, sorry.
Wake up, David.
Well, just go on that. It was not a comprehensive information. If that comprehensive information was asked for, you didn't get it. They asked for how much aggregate's being moved. That's what the weather trucks being used. We used to have that information. I want to go back to getting that information, so that they can, this committee can make that informed decisions.
I agree.
No, right. The, as far as the tax rate going up and down, peaks and downs, we haven't seen that. That's the idea that.
That's because we have a CIP.
Thirty years of my tax bills and all I saw was this, up, up, up. Wasn't until 2010 that we got things turned around, instead of moving the other direction. The town administrator told us, or at least told me, I thought he told everyone, that he feels that $100,000 is the point where you would want, anything over $100,000, you would want to lease purchase under that three CRF.
Okay.
You get into the big equipment, you talk, I did look at, see, Tony Van Havel told us a new grader to replace the one he had, and $300,000. I looked at some information that he got. He's right. That is what it said. That's, that's worth more than my house and land that I live on. Is, you know, not Paul here, but many it is. So we go and.
I guess the, the analysis, the kind of analysis, if I can interrupt you on that, just one quick thing.
Don't let me lose my thought.
Don't lose your thought, right, Doc?
Yeah.
The kind of analysis that I'd like to see to explain that is, okay, you've got a grader that costs $300,000. It has a 20-year lifetime, whatever. It's used X number of hours every year to do whatever things it's used for. You figure all that out, and then you back out, and then you figure out, you know, what is that worth if you had to contract it out? How much would it cost to contract?
Where I'm going.
Over the 20 years versus owning it?
The idea is.
You need to get the apples to apples dollar expense.
The idea is, you don't go up so many years. You have, your equipment runs 25 years, like you say here.
Yeah.
Well, on hill, you bond, we used to bond for buildings that period of time. The idea is more the taxpayer. It's that somebody like Paul here, where's he going to be in 25 years? Okay? So why even demand, why are we going to demand him to pay for our piece of equipment, whether it be a grader or whatever, when he's down here at the cemetery? Okay? The idea is that.
I was wondering what you're saying.
We don't have a partner section, so you're.
But the reason it works is because Paul's benefiting from what happened with the CIP committee 15 years ago.
Yeah. If you want to put it that way, we would pay for our schools ahead of time, but we, we don't. You know, buildings, we bond for them. And that's why the borrowing. And interest rates couldn't be in a better time.
The bond, the bond is paying it ahead of time in a way. You're committing future payments.
But you're already got, you're already enjoying, you're already using it. That's, that's the whole point right there, of moving, shrinking up your time.
I don't know if I still have it on my computer, but when we first, how many, 10 years ago, when we started, when you came up with the idea of the CIP committee, I think I was sitting in Jeff's seat right there as a first-year alternate. I did an analysis of the budgets, of the town budget, going back 10 years, and I made a comparison. And about, and it went up and down like crazy.
Uh-uh. I got all my DAP bills. The only time you see it after auction is when there's a revaluation.
Well, anyway.
That doesn't change.
I remember that graph. You remember that graph? A part of the town needed that.
And the tank school doesn't really reflect what the expenses are for the towns, you know. It's the town, the town expenses are like, it's the schools and things.
Right.
I'm talking about town DAPs. I'm not talking about school.
Even the, even the town is not, you know, there's even two parts to the town. One's the opposite part, which we've already made decisions on. And the other is the capital part, which is part of this. The other, the other word, those roads, capital equipment, expendable trust funds. So that's the other part that has to the town rate, overall rate.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want the rest of your comments? Did you remember your train?
Yep, about Paul. What we're going to do in 20 years. Twenty-five of you.
Why don't you make a proposal? You, you already did, right?
Okay. Does anybody want to make any, any more comments? You don't want to make any edits, modifications to this report?
I think you should read.
Keep, let's, keep, let's keep running through it, guys. We're.
In the interest of time also, we have another.
I know, we have another.
Some lengthy conversation here.
Well, should we digest this and vote on it next?
What's the time schedule and the budget? They're looking at this tomorrow night, aren't they?
Well, one thing I.
Or next week?
No, the budget committee, I think, has this planned for the first week of December, I think.
So we could have, we could let this slide till.
Well, our next meeting is what, the 5th or something?
No, the first week of December is Tuesday.
Yeah, it's the 6th.
If I may say, the meat of this is pages eight through 13, which goes into detail, each department and each item that we're, we're funding through CIP and, and so forth. And that's, that's where the, that's the point is here.
Yeah. Well.
And the reasons why we're funding those. And that's why I got this through you a, well, a week in advance of this meeting, so you can vote to vote.
And I, and I guess the import, before you start, I will just say, you remember I, I talked about the research that Scott Keelman, the town administrator, had done? And he presented a proposal, which we voted on and accepted. And then Mr. Anthes came in, and he and, I guess, Tony had, Mr. Bonanno, had decided that they needed to cut some money out of this. And cuts were made that night. Just cuts were made, cuts were made on every single, well, just about every single item. I do see them reflected here. There was no rationale given as to why these cuts were made, though.
We discussed each amount each department had, why we were making cuts or adding. And so we took some time.
Okay.
Might want to have that, that as a follow-up document or something, what the rationale was. Might be good to have as an, as an appendix or something, to understand what, what the reason was for the cuts.
Yeah, if we could get.
These were not the, these were not the requests.
The Scott Keelman's numbers. If we could get that report as an amend, as an attachment to this, that would probably be useful.
As to why the cuts were made.
At least, at minimum, at minimum, get the report itself in. Well, the town administrators recommended amounts, at minimum.
These are not what's recommended in here?
Not by the town administrator.
Right. The numbers in this are not the town administrators recommended numbers.
They were approved on October 20, on October 25th, and, and then they voted to just cut lines.
Okay.
But that's the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, just as a point, I don't have any problem with cutting the number, provided you have a good rationale, so.
If you have a rationale, exactly.
Do we want to go through the rest of these, the meat of this document, and? What?
Just, oh, just reading through quick.
Yeah.
We looked with the idea that when a department head comes, he sort of come with, with a wish list. And I don't blame him. They come in with the idea of, of, here's everything I want. And part of the CIP, I felt, and the other members felt, was, we've got to look at the practicality of this. We, we can't give everything that someone wishes for. We have to look at the taxpayers' money. And so when we went through those, we looked at ways that we could cut certain areas that would not harm the department or service or equipment. And that's what we did.
Okay.
We, we can't, I mean.
I don't, I, I've, I've been around this for a while. I don't think any department head walks in here with the, wow, who, I'd be so happy if I could get all these things list. Every time I've seen a department now. Especially with the highway department and fire department, which are the most expensive departments. They come in with, this is what we need to continue functioning as we are.
Well, we may differ a little bit there. Some do and some don't.
Well. Sure.
I think you're fine. The CIP committee has completed its work. They're done. This is the recommendation to you now judge off to write a report based on whatever you want. It's a tool for you to use for your report. They don't actually write your report. In the past, you've always adopted their report, but you can write your own report.
Or amend, amend this one is what is, is how it's normally done.
What you want. It's your.
Yeah, I know. I know.
I heard somebody say something, well, send it back to them. That's why I thought it wrong.
No.
What I asked for was a, an additional addendum indicating what the rationale was for the cuts, which may be something we want to consider if we want to do something different.
We made increases on certain things that have not been funded in this, this CIP report, that have not been funded before. And we spent a lot of time on the structures, the buildings, the town hall, and the library. We looked at some new ideas for parks and rec that they had come up with. And those are, those were things that were never done before, and then I felt neglected. And money's set aside for those funding, so we don't have these high peaks and, and drops. And so some of those were actually increased quite a bit of years past. So, you know, it's, it wasn't just the trucks and equipment. We also really spent a lot of time on. We also really spent a lot of time on the facility for this town. We have a, you know, a hundred and eight-year-old building we're in right now. And that, I feel, and several of the other members felt that it's, it hasn't been kept up. And it needs some money. And so we set aside a, a certain amount of money that had not been set aside before, but had quite a bit of increase. The library, for instance, there's certain things that they had presented to us that they needed since the town residents were responsible for the actual structure. So we set aside additional monies for those. So it wasn't all that, it was just cutting all these areas. Some we left alone, some we increased, some we looked at and it had quite a bit of discussion about, can it be reduced? And, and, and we had town administrator Scott involved with that when we did make cuts. And we asked him on every cut we made, is, is this too much for two, is this kind of hardness? And he agreed that the cuts could be made. So it wasn't a matter of, he just came up with these amounts and that, that was it. He was flexible on some of these, these cuts. So, so I, I think it, it, it's important to know that we did spend a lot of time. We had ten meetings on this. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time on these monies that we're spending. And it's, it's taxpayers' money, and that was our bottom line.
Well, I, I think what Mr. Kingman indicated was you can do that. You know, it, it really is the prerogative of the committee to make cuts.
Right.
You know, I don't think.
No, I understand that.
I don't think he necessarily supported. Yeah, I think you'd have to hear that from, from Scott. Because I know he is the one that did the research that generated the list that, that was in fact cut.
Um, I guess I would recommend that the, as this report leaves the planning board and goes forward, it, that Scott Kingman's recommendations would be included as a appendix. Um, just for, for factual reference.
Scott, can I just ask a?
Sure.
Question here. On, on page ten, and based on what's written here and, and a lot of discussion that's gone on tonight, I read the following. Based, rather than purchasing trucks, the committee recommends a new direction to rent, lease, lease, purchase, or contract out all trucks.
Right.
What I'm hearing is that there's a big change that's being recommended by this committee in how we, how, how we run our highway department. Today, we buy trucks and we own them and we maintain them. And we hire people to plow our roads and to maintain our roads summer and winter. And what's being recommended here is a big change.
Right.
From that, that we're not going to do that anymore. And we're going to lease and we're going to contract with people. So my question is, that could have a big, that might save money. And I get the taxpayers' money and all that. But there's also a counterargument sometimes, which is not everything that saves money is good. A lot of things that save money are not good. To what extent was town input solicited and heard? Because, you know, as Dot said, at, at one of our planning meetings, there was a lot of support for our highway department and what they do and how they keep our roads and how important our roads are to the people of this town. This is a huge decision. To what extent was public input factored into this? Or to what extent is there a handful of people making a decision for the town that maybe people do support? I don't know, but maybe they don't. How, how do we know that? And how did this come about? And how does this, how do we, how do we factor in how the town feels about this?
Right, I think it's an excellent point.
Well, that was my derivative, my comment, not really following the master plan. But the master plan was.
Right.
I think reasonably well attended, at least on many of the forums, and had reasonable public inputs. But that's, that was some of the basis for my comment, that it really doesn't follow the master plan per se.
So, none of the forum meetings did I hear anyone saying, the budget's too high, you have to cut it, cut it, cut it, cut it. Reduce spending everywhere you can. I didn't hear anyone saying that. I didn't.
Was that the subject?
It's part of the master plan, and what do you want for a highway department? That's what the whole public facilities, you know, that's, that was a major point of that.
And that was service levels are what we would like to maintain.
Right.
And you need to do whatever you need to do to maintain that. Doesn't mean you spend three times the amount, but it doesn't mean you cut it by a third either.
Right.
So that, that's, I think, paraphrased, that's what I have got from the highway, road part of that input.
Right, if everyone in town was, was crying about how much money the highway department was spending, they would have made a comment about that. Somebody would have done that. And no one did. Everyone said they wanted to maintain the services as they are.
I don't think he said a word about not maintaining services. I heard him just saying you can do the same services for less.
Well, that's an assumption.
That is an assumption.
The whole thing is just an assumption. This is nothing but a recommendation. It's not saying we're going to change. It just says, here's, here's our recommendation to you folks. And it's a matter of being, thank you very much for putting your time and effort into it. A woman.
Well, well, where, well, that's a good point, David. Where, where does this go from here, then? So, so this is.
It goes to the planning board. From planning board to then to the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. Each one independently has their own decisions to make.
Yeah.
Mutually exclusively, don't work together, whatever. Each one independently makes their own decisions.
Right.
We have. With the master plan, it's the guideline.
A part of the information concerning other towns and other highway departments that we looked at.
Yeah.
And that was also a factor in our decision.
I wish those, that, some of that information was in this report.
Well.
For a better background.
I, I have a stack of papers about that thing.
Well, okay, I'm not saying all of it.
Information and so forth. And, and that's part of what we researched, background research that we did. All our meetings were in public, open to the public. And I hear from people a lot saying, can you make cuts without hurting services? And that's what we're trying to do here.
Yeah, I mean, that's, maybe that's another point, though, you know, there's always the cost-benefit analysis. What's, what, what do we lose? You know, what, what do we risk? You're right, David, we can't say what do we lose, we don't know. But what do we risk? And what exactly is saved? Are our tax bills going down by, you know, twenty percent because of this? Or, or point oh, oh-two percent, and we're taking a risk? You know, it's a matter of what's the risk and what's, and what's the benefit?
Goes to my, goes to my point of more thorough analysis, as we earlier.
Right, right. So I guess the next question is then who is going to do that analysis? The Board of Selectmen over the next year? I don't think it's the planning boards purview to make that analysis.
No, I, I, actually, the way I would like to see it is I'd like to see that headed by the T A with a planning board, some planning board over, sorry, some Board of Selectmen oversight. But it really should be starting at the Department of Public Works, initially on the highway side. You have to look at each one, and the fire department should be, fire chief, and the police department should be, et cetera. But that should start at that level. And then, as I said, have the T A doing the management piece of that with the Board of Selectmen being the oversight and final questioner, if you will, or receiver of that. And then quite developed questions and assure that the taxpayer is, is getting its fair, you know, fair response for tax value.
Right.
If I may say one other thing, we did include the town administrator, who was the road agent of, of where, where we got it from. And he does, what, he does contracting out equipment to save money for the town and taxpayers.
Well, New Durham does too. We do, we have done that for years.
We're, we're, well, right now, we're talking about the cloud. And, and so he, he was the one that, when it was, you know, when we were discussing this, he brought that up. And, and so we were looking at quite a different avenues that we could go. And that's why we put it in this report. This might be a new direction we should be looking at. Here's alternatives of just rather than purchasing things outlined. And other towns do this and they do it very successfully. We don't have to invent the wheel. Other towns do this. Some towns have their entire highway department contracted out. Now, I'm against that. But I'm certainly for lending, having part of our own workforce and also contracting out some of these items. In the end, it's, it's less expensive because you don't maintain these, these big pieces of, first of all, you don't pay for outright. Two, you don't main, you have to maintain them year after year after year. And like you said, in, in the one particular vehicle that we purchased, it's fairly new, this freight miner, we got a bill of just the last year and a half of twenty-five thousand dollars. And, and that's things that we have to start looking at. If we're going to buy this equipment, what, actually, the equipment we should be buying, what type. But if we can contract it out, let somebody else take the edits and maintain it and so forth.
I guess, I like, I need, I need to see a thorough analysis of owning versus contracting out. Because those contractors have to buy the equipment and maintain the equipment and charge you to pay for that.
That's right.
So it's not, I don't see how it can, how it's so much cheaper. The equipment is still being bought. The equipment is still being maintained by somebody. And somebody, either way, the taxpayers are going to pay for that.
Well, thing hinges on use, you know.
Yeah.
How much, how much is it used by the town versus, you know, to, you know, to, to put down the outsourcing hat here.
Right.
The outsourcing costs are spread perhaps over a wider number of towns if they have, or wider number of clients, if you will, customers.
Yeah.
So that cost of equipment is spread over, or different. The whole issue boils down to what's the, what's the town's use of that equipment? And is it getting value for when it's invested? That's right, the whole key.
Yeah, and that's what I went with on the comprehensive information about how much aggregate is being moved during the summertime. Because many road agents in towns don't even have big trucks. They do, as we just, Brad just talked about. I talked to Epsom, he says, too expensive to own a truck, I can do much cheaper by contracting. It's capital issue, you're gonna, you know, you're paying as much as a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a truck now. Your depreciation is anywhere from, well, you know it is the first year, it's catastrophic. But then it will drop down after many years and of course, maintenance costs are some. So that's what you kind of look at. It's like Swin said, it's use, and you get enough use out of it. I worked for a company for years. We had such expensive machines, we ran them around the clock, three shifts, often Saturday evening some days.
Business is always, yeah, business is always looking at quick utilization rates.
Sure.
Or payback and all that other stuff. So, you know, again, picture, you understand. I have no problem with looking at some things we've already done, like lease purchase, the town's already done some of that.
Right.
But what I do have a problem with is blanket statement that we will always do that without a careful, more careful analysis. That's where the issue is for me.
And to add to that, I think it's a mistake to make the cuts before we have justified them.
Right.
Because we're cutting the legs out from under our programs before we have the rationale and the evidence that it's really a fiscally responsible thing to do, a good decision.
Well, if you look at the scheduling, which is the last page of when these things are, are to be replaced. And sometimes even the replacement time, it is extended. A lot of these we're looking at, that we're talking about now, aren't going to be replaced in the next ten, twenty years. So, you know, we are looking at all those. And that's also in the report. When each one of these items needs to be replaced.
What you need to do, to blend these two to find out how much you have in the.
That's last page.
What they're looking for in replacement. Need to combine spreadsheet, how much is in each account, of course, what the replacement schedule is, and then determine whether you got time to do that.
He says to do that, and he's going to put in another column.
So who's going to do that? Who's going to do that?
Scott.
I mean, if I have the raw stuff, I could do it in about half an hour. But I don't have the raw stuff. If they give me a lot of spreadsheets and the information, I can do it, but I need that. I'd be happy to do that, I just need it. It's a surprise to me, I can do it.
Town administrator would have it, though? The town administrator would have that information?
Well, yeah, the finance officer would have that information, uh, yeah.
Wait, if you carefully look at the last two pages, you'll see that you have that information.
Yeah, so I said, we just need to blend the ones so we can see it in one, one view. If you give me the raw spreadsheet, if, if town administrator or finance officer give me the raw spreadsheet, I can, I can do that. Pretty easy to do. I do think we should wrap it up, because we do have another.
Yeah, I know. Okay, bottom, the bottom of page four. Uh, I'd like to insert, insert the following statement. The planning board understands the rationale for developing alternate funding sources for vehicles and equipment, but feels it is necessary to develop detailed, a detailed analysis that demonstrates the cost-benefit of such funding sources before the town commits to them.
Are you going to do that in your report?
We're not writing a report, I'm amending these, the current C I P document to add that statement.
Well, it becomes your report, yeah. They've done their report.
Good to me to us, you're accepting the report.
You're rewriting your report to town.
I'm making an amendment to it.
Well, technically, David's correct, the planning, the C I P.
It is our report, yeah.
C I P committee has this. If you, there's two ways to handle it. One is to say, this is what we'd like to see in it. Send it back to C I P and ask them to consider putting it in the report. They can say yea or nay, send it back to us, and we can say, yes, we want it in, which then becomes our report. Or you can do what has also been suggested. This is the report, they're finished. So we would then take this and develop whatever we so chose. So, I mean, technically, he's correct, but there are two or different ways to handle it.
So, so are you saying that, that this can be amended by the planning board to become, to become the new report?
It would become the planning board's C I P, which it really is anyway, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we've always made, we've almost, it's been, it's been common for the planning board to make amendments to this report without calling it our report.
But for you to just put in a critique against the C I P committee, also critiques yourself because you're not doing what you said they should do. This is your job. The, a C I P, a, a report, a C I P report is a planning board's job. That's in the statute. However, the town decided to help you with an advisory committee. And that's what they do. They come, they've gone together and come forward and say, well, here's the report to help you with. Now, you're supposed to write your, your own report. Now, you got to wave it in the past because you just said, we're just going to draw what they, what they wrote and move on. Because it doesn't really affect you that much, quite frankly, to the planning board.
Well, you know, this is the issue of adding the appropriate resources for this, this planning board, which, which by statute has that responsibility. And, and, but by statute also, this planning board has basically, as I read the R S A, some independent fiscal abilities, such as hiring the appropriate people. It's in, it's in the R S A that they've, if they've been able to exercise because the selectmen, you know, presumably would say no, no.
Okay.
So it, it's a, it's a round run. And it just seems to me that if, if, if the planning board doesn't think that there were sufficient things done, just like you think that you read, read Scott, it seems to me that they can put that in and send it on to the decision-making people, which is the, which is the selectmen. They can either take that and say, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll spend more money and more analysis, or they'll say no.
As I recall the statute, the main reason you would do this is because you want to judge impact fees. Now, the judge impact fees, you're supposed to take certain steps. I think you're supposed to have a master plan, I think you're supposed to do this.
Yeah. Well, that's a different subject, though. What if I, what if I modify this? What if I change, instead of changing the document itself? I'll make a motion that the planning board approves the C I P document with the following comment. That, the comment I just read.
That would be in the minutes.
That would be in the minutes, and maybe we can attach that, that motion as it is approved or not approved by the planning board with the C I P document.
If this is being done under the auspices of the planning board, why can't the planning board just amend it as they?
I don't know, I, I guess I'm a little puzzled by that, because we've done it before.
The subtle difference here is, the subtle difference here is, this was the C I P. I mean, you have to make some determination whether C I P is a subset of the planning board for this function or if they are somewhat independent, they submit their report for planning board approval. Planning board says yea or nay. If they say yea, it will just pass it on, which has been, for the most part, what's happened, although there has been some modifications over the years. Or if the planning board says, we want to add certain sentences, or sentence, whatever it is, or certain items. The C I P document then stays as a C I P document. But what goes, you know, what, what the planning board then issues is there. But what goes, you know, what the planning board then issues is their report, which may be part of that, in addition to whatever sentences they wanna add, in addition to whatever else they wanna do. So, I mean, technically, that is.
I, I always understood that the CIP committee was a subcommittee of the planning board.
No.
The, the argument against that is that the board of selectmen is who appoints it, which I've never really understood, quite frankly. But, or because of the CIP, because the CIP is a report to the planning board. But that's, that's what historically has happened.
So what if the board wanted to do with this? Do I just drop my comment and we want a motion to approve it or not approve it? We need to do something.
Well, you could take that and, and make it all your own planning board document, and then add whatever you want to. In other words, you, you're, you're allowed to plagiarize.
You, and in fact, you don't have to approve it. What you could do is, what you could do is say, "We accept the document." That doesn't mean you approve it, it means you, you received it and have accepted it. Then you could go and say, "We wanna add, change, do this, do that, whatever it is." At which point then it becomes, you know, the capital improvement master plan, but not the CIP committee's, uh, report.
But then it's a report from the planning board.
It's the same title, it's just not the CIP committee report, it becomes the planning board's capital improvement master plan. You know, the other, the flip side of it is, and I, and I understand your hesitation to a certain level, the flip side of it is that anything you do causes significant additional work.
Right.
Which we are somewhat time constrained relative to budget process, so I understand, I understand the dilemma.
I just wanna get this.
I understand the dilemma.
Process moved forward tonight.
But, uh, those, those for me are the options. And I think that compares to what you were saying too.
Let me ask this question then, when is the, the budget committee and the board of selectmen gonna discuss the CIP?
I think the budget, and I don't have the budget committee stipend for me, I thought it was the first week of December. And it could, it could be the week before that, the week after Thanksgiving. Board of selection doesn't have a specific date, they were trying to do it before our meeting here tonight, and I actually objected to that, because I wanted to honor the process.
Right.
Um, and, and they were seeing, I think, that to a certain extent. But I think the board of selectmen, again, I'm not speaking for them, but reading between the lines that I saw, they'd like to move on it fairly quickly. But, um, and you can correct me if I've misstated that, but, um, so, but there's no time date specifically, or date that's specifically been specified for board of selection to review.
Can I assume when, when the various budget committee and selectmen's do decide that they will be hearing, discussing this document, it'll be in their agendas, that they post before the meeting? Can that specifically, just make that assumption?
I think the agenda normally tries to be as complete as it can be, yeah.
Right.
If we're doing capital, uh, you know, things, which is the next thing to do, and by that, uh, we'd like to have any input from, about capital from the planning board or.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Or the CIP, it doesn't matter, whoever brings it, if you don't have it, it's okay, we're not gonna, you know, the town's not gonna stop. We're gonna come up with something, our own plan.
That's what I'm trying to get at, as a.
And we're gonna wait, wait, I mean, again, it's a tool, like I say, it's, it's just information.
I think for me, again, as I've expressed to you the dilemma, that I think I read into your thoughts here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong again. The thing to do is, it's, yes, we accept the document, that is, they've submitted to us and we received it, that's all that motion would do. You can then decide whether you say, "Well, send this forward to board of selection and budget committee as is, or we want to revise it, that's a separate decision."
Right.
Or the alternative is say, "We'll approve it," you know, you want a motion to approve it as it is, and, you know, let it apply on that, whatever.
Right.
The choice is how the planning board wishes to proceed.
So does it come down to, the planning board can accept without making, without approving?
Without approving.
Without approving or disapproving.
Right. And to my knowledge, that only, as I said, recognizes that we've received the planning, the CIP's coming report.
The planning board could reject, certainly is one option.
Yeah, that's option.
And the planning board could approve with comments for revision to, to the budget.
That's, that would not be an approval of the CIP, that would be an additional report.
I guess that's the part that's bugging me.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do we get your comments?
That's what I'm trying to hear.
But that's the point, let me repeat the point. The CIP committee's report is this.
Right.
You can move to receive it, or accept it, whatever, whatever word you wanna use there. If the planning boards, as a, as a majority, chose to make some modifications to it, it's still called capital improvement master plan, it's just not the CIP committee's report, it now becomes the planning board's capital improvement master plan. The subtle difference is, historically, they've been virtually one and the same, because of, you know, differences weren't there before. So, to, to answer your question, Jeff, um, the way to do that is, accept it from the CIP, make any modifications you want, then approve those with the modifications. I, I mean, that's my.
It's the planning board.
If you're gonna make modification, you're gonna chat, I mean.
No, you have to, I think.
It's been presented.
Yeah, you need to, you need to have a motion that it's been presented and you accept it.
No, unless it's gonna become your report, you don't need to.
No, that's approval, acceptance is only an acknowledgement and receipt.
Well, do what you want, of course, but you don't need to go to that.
Should you, should you perhaps first ask, I, I clearly don't vote, but, but should you first?
You will vote tonight. You're sitting in Bob's chair now.
Oh, okay. Um, should you ask first, "Does the planning board agree with the amendment that you've proposed?" And then we decide how to bring that amendment forward. Is it in the minutes?
Or additionally, are there any other changes that, whether it were, needs, needs to, needs, feels like should be made?
Well, don't you want that other page?
Pardon?
I do, I would like that, that appendix from, uh, the town administrator attached also.
Which may impact any other modifications that you might do, you know, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't recall seeing those, uh, I think there may have been a handout, one of CIP, so I may have it on file, but, uh, but, uh, what the TA recommends may influence you to make other changes here, I don't know, may not.
I think we don't have all the information.
We don't have a lot of time, we don't have the time to make that analysis.
That's the dilemma that you have.
We don't have the time to make that kind of analysis, that'll take another week or two.
Yeah, looking at the calendar, budget committee needs tomorrow night, so that's on the 16th. I'm assuming that their next meeting would be on the 30th.
Which one?
Budget committee, then each tomorrow night.
Then each tomorrow night, and then the 30th.
And we don't know, do we know what their agenda is?
Yeah, it's not this tomorrow night.
Yeah, it's not this, no, they're hearing on department. We have an extra Tuesday in this month, it's November 29th, and we have the option of calling a workshop session. Half hour, deal with this issue.
We have a meeting in Sunnyvale that night at 5:30.
I'm sorry?
The Sunnyvale meeting comes that night.
Five thirty to seven thirty, well, we could schedule it for eight o'clock.
What day are you looking for?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
What's the?
It's the fifth Tuesday, we have an extra Tuesday in this month.
What's the Sunnyvale meeting, Jeff?
That's the accessory dwelling.
Right, right.
Five thirty to seven thirty.
That's up in Austin.
In Austin.
Coming back here by eight o'clock.
No.
By fifteen. By then, by then, everyone would have had a chance to read it, look at Scott's, um, initial recommendation.
Is that the consensus of the board?
I don't know, I'm just saying, that's, that's a possibility.
How do you feel about it? I'm asking the board members now, how do you feel about doing that?
On the 29th?
You're included, Jeff.
If there's a chance we could do it earlier.
Well, it strikes me that the only people who were really familiar with this coming into this meeting were Dot and Swin. I don't think you guys were all.
No, but we have two weeks to read through it.
Certainly it was I. And, well, that's the question, I mean, if we wait two weeks, does it lose all impact if we make changes? Or do the changes?
I don't think so, because it won't be discussed by the budget committee and selectmen yet.
Uh, I, I don't know that, I, I would hope that it wouldn't, but I don't know that. I'm not the majority of the board of selectmen.
When is the next board of selectmen meeting?
Uh, that is, uh, the 28th.
Day before.
I would hope they would honor the process, but I don't know that.
And the chairman of the board of selectmen's date?
That's unfair.
That's not fair?
Yeah, that's unfair.
Why not?
The 22nd?
Because this is not a board of selectmen meeting.
Yeah, that is gonna be hard. That is gonna be really hard.
Well, that's the weekend.
But, uh, just, just as an FYI, the one after the 75th, so.
Right.
It's the 28th and the 5th, the next board of selectmen meetings. So, anyway.
All right.
In my opinion, I think there's a lot of concern and further discussion is warranted, but it's a matter of schedule.
Right.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the 29th, but I'm assuming that nobody wants to come on the 22nd.
No, I don't see that happening.
I could come the 22nd, though.
Huh?
I could come the 22nd, but I'm fine with the 29th.
It is like eight o'clock, eight fifteen?
Mm-hmm, eight fifteen, I would just come right down from, uh, Sunnyvale. Probably even leave a little bit early.
Yeah.
Make sure I got here.
Okay, so, um, if we meet then, do we potentially, do we accept this as is tonight? We need to accept, kinda need to.
You don't have to, no, you don't have to accept it tonight.
You must accept it all. It's just like the school, if, if the school came here with documents saying, "Here's our schedule and work around it," it's just intervention.
No, I, I definitely don't that.
This is not a statutory.
I understand that, but it is set up by the town as a, as an official committee. And if nothing else, I'd wanna honor that committee with an action. I don't say I approve or disapprove or whatever, but at least honor it by saying, "We recognize your work, we received it, we recognize you put substantial effort into it, and, and we wanna understand that and recognize that."
Again, we don't need to.
Don't say it's required, I'm just saying, I think that's the right thing to do.
Received and discussed.
Yeah.
So you could, you could not take any other action on it tonight.
Right.
But I would say, prepare your suggested modifications to have, so it can go pretty clear for the 29th.
Right, okay. All right, then let's do that, let's, um, delay action on the CIP tonight, and schedule a meeting for, a workshop meeting for the 29th, starting at about eight fifteen. Please post that, Laura. Um, and we'll go from there.
So you don't want a motion to accept this?
No.
No, don't need it right now.
Eight fifteen, you say?
Eight fifteen. All right, next item is the watershed district ordinance. Jeff, this is your baby.
We made significant revisions, and I believe Paul is prepared to, to lead the discussion first.
You have, in your hands, the back proposal of 1109.
Right. Yeah.
Uh, and, uh, I'll go, I'll go through the changes and emphasize that what's different. But it does take into account the comments that you've had from some of the folks that you have solicited. And I think we're basically are addressing all of, not, uh, all of their concerns.
Okay, Paul, did you get the email from Jason Stock?
Yes, I have.
Date of November 14th?
No, I only saw it a few minutes before the meeting, but I, I, I read it over, and I don't know whether we have any conflict because of the changes that have been made.
Okay.
Um, and, and, and just recall that, that this is, what you're seeing or hearing is in addition to whatever is in the steep slopes ordinance, or in our residential slash agricultural slash, uh, what's the term on? Oh, recreational district. So, what's ever, whatever is in there is included.
Right.
Uh, and, and that's one way to solve some of the problems that, that John brings up. Recall, of course, that Mr. Stroud, or whatever his name is, Stroud?
Stock, Jason Stock.
Mr. Stock, of course, is a representative of the Timber Owners Association, which is not necessarily impartial, uh, person. But his, his comments are, should be taken into account.
Okay.
So, um, the, the purpose and authority part is, is left basically intact. Uh, we could put in a lot more material in there, but I thought that unless you have some issues of what's mentioned there as to the reasons for it, I think that can stay pretty much the way it is. The B is called district boundary, and thank, thanks to, uh, Bob Kretkraft or Zerrin for doing the work. Uh, and now that he's really outlined the limits of the district, and I think all of you have gotten a map of that, correct?
Yeah, not including the drop.
No, it's not including this draft. But under B, it, it says, at the last sentence, "The limits of this watershed are delineated in a couple graphic maps posted on the town's website and available from the land use office." And so, so we would include, uh, the, uh, the Kretkraft mapping, which was, which was done in a, in a very professional math. Uh, well, he pointed out that Rattlesnake Mountain is outside of the boundaries of the, of the district. So, uh, I think one change that we're even going to make here is to, to take on the fifth line of the district boundary, remove the words Rattlesnake Mountain. Uh, if you look at this map, you'll see why, and you can add, instead of, and add Mount Eleanor, instead of Rattlesnake Mountain, because Mount Eleanor is in the, in that proposed district. Uh, and you can also add Devil's Dan Mountain to be more complete. So that, that is on, on the district boundary. The definitions, uh, there, we had, uh, you know, quite a bit of discussion on some of those things, uh, some of these definitions. And, and particularly for the Wordingill skyline, uh, we decided to make it quite specific for this particular Mary Meeting watershed district, and, and call it, it's, the skyline is the ridge line along which the surface of the earth and sky appear to meet when viewed from most vantage points from Mary Meeting Lake or from the public roads that surround it.
Okay.
So whatever you can see around the bowl of, of mountains, that's where you are. Um, so on the, on the second page, we have a new D which, which combines what.
Paul, ridge was also a discussion last time around, and we did also revise, revise that, because, because there was discussion about the distinction between a ridge and a skyline.
Right.
We've now defined a ridge as a hill that is not, a hill on a slope that is not the skyline. So that's what a, what a ridge, and I hope that that's clearer than what it was previously.
Because the skyline is the highest ridge, if you'd like to think of it.
Right, right.
And I think this says that clearly now.
Yeah, okay.
Not so clearly before, but it is now.
Uh, we, uh, before, we had, we had two sections, one was permitted uses, and then we had something called prohibited uses. And it seemed like, and they, and the two of them were split by design requirements. So in this new version, we put prohibited and allowed together into something called uses and limitations. Uh, there are no changes in, in, in the items that are listed here, uh, except for one thing which, uh, I believe was the, the commercial, uh, the previous version, I think, had commercial development included in here.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I moved that, uh, I think appropriately to the section on special exceptions as, as the first item.
Okay, yeah.
Because, because it is, all commercial developments have special exception by, by our regulations.
Except in the business district.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, what?
Commercial, um.
Commercial uses are. Commercial uses are a special exception.
Allowed by right in the, in the business district.
Yes, in the, in the business.
In town business district.
Right.
So, okay, everyone else is special exception.
Right, so that's why it's moved over to, as the second item, special exceptions.
Okay.
The design, uh, so that's the only change, it just combines the two sections, previous sections into one. The design requirements and guidelines are, I believe, the same. Jeff, if I'm incorrect, let me know. I think like number seven, there was quite a bit of discussion. And I think you guys were concerned about the boundaries between adjacent lots. What, what if they are in the same line? So we basically said, uh, that our boundaries between adjacent lots, if possible, cannot be continued from one lot to another. Obviously, if, if the line is continuous, then it is, then it is the boundary line. And, uh,
Yeah, well, then.
We put in a, if, if possible, something in number seven.
Right, right, and, and before that too, we did have discussion previously about number three, E, number three. And I think it was, again, it was clarity. What exactly did we mean? And where is this 25-foot section that can be cut? And where is this 45-degree cone that can be topped? I, I hope that we have clarified that in a way now that's, that's clearer and more understandable. I didn't hear anyone particularly objecting to the ideas, it's just it wasn't very clear about, about what exactly would be allowed and not allowed.
And then, and then in this latest version, we now have a, a complete picture of, of what we're talking about.
Which is, which is lifted en masse from.
Yeah, you can see where it says, "Elevated Land Use Planning Techniques Handbook," uh, chapter 2.2, Steep Slopes.
I still don't like that. That graphic, to me, still doesn't make sense.
What, what, what's not clear, Scott?
Well, it, it, it's not, it's clear is what, I, I understand what you're saying is the view area, but to me, it's illogical. I would think the view area would be the building envelope plus 25 feet beyond. Is what I would think. That, to me, makes more sense.
The, the, the diagram is where it shows the viewing area exactly in the middle, which may or may not be what I was.
Oh, sure. It actually says an 25-foot opening maybe at any point along the downslope.
But why should, why should only a small portion of the footprint be allowed to have a viewing area, I think is the point Scott's making, right?
So here's the B, right?
Well, that's a clear cut area. The other one is topped area. The out area is as wide as the climbing and, and building envelope.
Right.
Go, go ahead and draw.
Right, so this is your, this is how you have it. This is your building envelope, and this is your clear cut area. This is 25 feet, right? And goes out at.
Clear cut goes.
No, clear cut is the 25 straight out.
And, and, and anywhere you would like it, not necessarily in the.
And then, so, so this is 25 feet clear cut, right?
Right.
And this is topped.
Right.
Correct. You think that, you think that's not sufficient?
I think it makes more sense.
I have no eraser here.
You need a wet cloth, you know, it's not going.
To go from here.
Here's a different color.
45 degrees out, that can be clear cut, or that could be topped, or.
And, and see, and there's no point to, to have it out of the corners because you can't build a building where with, where you're, your building ends 40 feet from those corners, from the building envelope corners.
You can, you can put the clear cut anywhere along that footprint.
Right.
Well, what if we modified it to, to pretty much what you're saying? What if we modified it as, the clear cut, instead of being 25 feet to the boundary, this is the boundary out here.
Right.
Instead of being only 25 feet to the boundary, it's the width of the building.
Going to take 25 feet to the boundary.
And then you could probably get rid of the whole 45-degree thing, because if you've got the entire width of the building, do you really need to cut to the sides? Does that simplify?
I like that better.
Well, put, put a building in, where you put in, your, your, your building is 40 feet away from each side.
Right, so your building is something like this.
So why would you be cutting way off to the side of the building?
Because you might have a bedroom window right here, on the edges of the building, and you wanna be able to look out. You can't look out. You can only look out through the window in the middle of the building.
Or if you move the 25 feet through that 25.
That's why.
Sure. Yeah, that doesn't seem much useful politically. If, if you said, this is the building, this is the building envelope, and then this is the outer edge of the piece of land, you can cut, you can clear cut, essentially, it would be from here, right?
So it's not quite drawn there.
To the parcel.
Clear cut the whole building envelope?
You mean, you.
Or just the bill, clear cut the building?
It was the building.
Are, are you, also, are you talking about clear cutting or topping?
No, that's not the building envelope, that's the lot line.
No, 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 that's the building envelope.
Yeah, this is the build, this big box is the build.
And then the parcel line exists, that's the lot.
Right, yeah.
Right here, so there's the building, the building envelope, and then the lot line.
Right.
So, to simplify this, what if we said, from here to here, here to here, can be clear cut?
Yeah.
To give, to give a view. Now, do you still want to allow anything cut, topped out to the side? Or do you just clear cut, this is a pretty wide field.
I guess it, it, to me visually, it seems to make more of a gradual opening to let the wider corner be topped. Otherwise, you're gonna have these channels in the hillside that are not gonna look right. If you top to the sides, then it's, you know.
This is all about looks, too, isn't it?
It is all about looks, I mean.
What'd you say? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
It's all about look.
Yeah, so significantly. Again, remember that this is, this is not in our current regulations, all other regulations apply. So it looks like it's very one-sided, but it's only commenting on, on some provisions for this particular area, and looks is important. But we've also got everything else in there, as far as, you know, watershed, water control, and erosion control, and, and all those things.
I mean.
I, I'm just, uh, what, you know, what, what others have proposed, and, and in this particular, uh, publication of the municipal people from Vermont, they proposed a 25-foot wide cut down the hill, anywhere along the building. And, and then extending from that clear cut, because your bedrooms, things are on that side, you, you can then top the trees at a 45-degree angle, and, and an expanding angle all the way to the property boundary.
Question is, what's magic about 25 feet?
Right, that's where, that's my puzzle.
Just pick a number, yeah.
I'd say the width of the house, width of the building.
I mean, you could still have everything else the same, you could make it like 40 feet or something, you know.
Right.
I mean, how long is the average building is what? 60 feet, 40 feet, whatever?
I would just keep it to the size of the building.
Building, yeah.
So it's changeable.
I mean, that, that could be a little bit dicey because, you know, because my house is very long, but it's not very wide, so.
Not to exceed 50 feet?
Well, that's the point, uh.
The size of the building, but not to exceed 50 feet? The clear cut? I almost wonder, do you really need, if you're, if you're, if you look at the second drawing, the lower drawing, if you're looking, if you're looking downhill anyway, do you really need to clear cut to the ground?
No.
Looking downhill?
It depends on.
Why do you need to do any of that?
Depends on whether you need access or not.
Acts a different story.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's a different issue. Access is your driveway, you need to clear cut to get your driveway.
This is clearly talking about views.
You're talking about views, why don't you, you can clear cut in your building envelope, that's already stated. You can top in that viewpoint from the building envelope outward. And not, you don't need to clear cut to the ground in any alley, 25 feet, 50 feet wide at all.
Maybe the issue is just pick a different number than 25.
Yeah.
Either, either the building, you know, the foundation.
I think it would, it would be, you're trying to improve the view of, allow the, the people to live there to have a good view.
Right.
Without having these clear cuts on the ridge line. Then don't, then don't allow any clear cut on the ridge line at all.
Yeah.
Just allow the building envelope to be cleared so people can have a yard.
Well, it, I mean, these are the choices, and it's for you folks to try to make a decision, and maybe.
I'm hearing some nods in the background here.
No, it's.
It's a big place, can you identify yourself, please?
Sure, Nancy Bryant, and, and I'm head, probably on 256 South Shore, on Mary Meeting Lake. I, yeah, when you're talking about clear cut, I mean, then you're talking about more erosion, you're talking about, um, less ability for the rain to, you know, to, so you're gonna have more stormwater runoff, you're gonna have more erosion when you do the clear cutting, so I don't think you wanna be encouraging clear cutting.
Right.
It's only gonna, it's, it's, it's gonna have a consequence for the water quality of the lake that
Right.
this is all trying to help protect. So I agree with you about why do you want.
Why do you need to clear cut to the ground right down this way?
How to the first place.
Yeah.
Topping, topping would at least allow the trees and the roots and the system there to help preserve the, the water quality and capture the rain.
Right.
So I, I concur with what you're saying, I think.
Right, so, before, before we move forward, Mike, I have a question. What did you do with, okay, so there's some stuff about forestry in here.
Yeah, but.
We'll get to that, because that's part of the question here.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because Jason Stock's comments to me today were centered around the forestry practices that you were describing in the first draft. And he was very concerned about them.
Right, uh, you can completely remove that if you like, because it's staying clear off in your, in your, uh, general, uh, district, you, you, you wanted to refer to that, it's page 57, I think? On, in our, in our regulations. You know, the underlying district is the, is the.
Rural residential.
Right, and in that, it describes what, how forestry is allowed.
Right.
And, and it doesn't need to be repeated here.
Right. Okay.
So, so I don't have any problem removing it because it's in the underlying district, 57.
Forestry, yep.
Yeah, and agriculture, both.
Yep.
Right.
We can remove both of, actually, what I did, I put agriculture and forestry together, and.
Right.
And, uh, we can either cite the language in the underlying district or do, or say nothing, because it is already in the underlying district.
Yeah.
It's in the steep slope. The, the language.
It's in, only the steep slope district, so maybe it should be repeated, because maybe something is not in the steep slope district.
Here's how it reads in steep slope, "Forestry management and timber harvesting as permitted by RSA blah blah, with implementation of best management practices as recommended in the document Best Management Practice Protecting New Hampshire's Water Quality by the University of New Hampshire Cooperative Extension." So it doesn't say that UNH has to approve it or whatever, just uses best practices. And, and that's what we're trying to say now. We realized, after the comments we got the last time, we can't prohibit agriculture, and we can't prohibit timbering, because state law says you can do agriculture and you can do timbering. So we can't prohibit that, and we can't supersede state law, and we don't want to. The only, the only thing that we have remains in the document with regard to timbering is that we did feel that we wanted to keep, uh, what would be a, a restriction on cutting and building on the skyline.
Thank you.
That, that we felt is appropriate, and it's up to the town to decide if they agree with that. But we certainly think that that belongs in, should remain in the proposal now.
Well, if, actually, if you removed it, it's, it's in one of the, uh, for, uh, limitations that we put.
It's in two places, it's in two places right now.
Well, but when I look at it, Jeff, if you remove that paragraph completely, we would wind up moving also that, that the, the, the plan must be approved prior to commencement of clearing of the land and must contain best forestation provisions.
Well, that was what, is it Jason?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He had a big objection for that.
Right.
So that's why I feel if we stick with what's in the steep slopes, it's the same language in the steep slopes overlay district with, and, and just add, except for cutting on the ridge line, on the, on the skyline, that that should be, because that's already been given, it's the same language, but just add in no cutting on the skyline. Otherwise, agriculture is permitted, you just have to submit a plan and do it according to UNH Cooperative Extension. Timbering is permitted, just use best practices, that's all we're, we're asking.
Yeah, I think Jason's, um, Stock's notes were, he was wondering what you mean by involving UNH Coop Extension and, and our, and our CS. You can have them coming to consult on site?
That's the problem.
Or what? So you need to clarify what you mean by that.
Yeah, it's just.
If it's just BMPs, then, then that's what you need to say.
Well, but we don't need to say anything, because it's said in the, in the underlying district, that's why I'm saying.
We'll lift that language.
We can lift that language and put it in there.
Right.
Uh, to, to emphasize.
Which, which I think that's what is said here in the steep slopes.
So the forestry is, is primarily just to keep the, the, just the language concerning, um, that the skyline is preserved. So you need to describe that in a way that's reasonable.
It's around whatever the state law.
No tree cutting that interferes with the skyline, or some kind of language like that.
All right, and do we want to include, repeat what, what's in the underlying district? Or do we just don't want to even mention it? I mean, I started, I was trying to be complete. Now that it's controversial, I just feel we don't even need to say anything.
I, I like repeating it, because as I said, this is steep slopes, and not all of this land is steep slopes.
Right, right.
Just so that it's clear, it's the same as it is in steep slopes. Whatever's allowed by the state is allowed, but we want people to use best management practices.
All right, that's better.
Um, so we've, we've, we've massaged that one to the, uh, plans, which is now F, is the same as it was before. Previous use, um, there was a objections to the, the previous language of previous use.
You and Tati, Scott, had problems, we had things like 75% of the surrounding growth.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
50% of the.
Right, Jason Stock had similar concerns about how to find that.
Now, now it says, "Land in the overlay district which was previously been used in timbering or agriculture may be subdivided and developed with a lesser degree of tree beverage than required by these regulations. A management plan for vegetation regrowth must be approved."
Which we stole from somewhere.
Yeah.
Another town, something.
Approved by who?
Right, right, that's, that was, again, Jason Stock's questions, whose, what management plan, under what laws or regulations, and approved by who, and implemented and, and monitored by who. His question, what is the CEO gonna be, become a forester now? And go around and, and check all these management plans and see if they're being followed? That was his question.
But, but, you know, we've done that in so many other things, where we've asked for a management plan, and, and Barney has come up with a management plan, and the planning board approved it as part of the subdivision or the, or the, uh, yeah, major minor subdivision.
Well, the stormwater, stormwater management plan is specific, and that's being, you know, that's more specific.
Well, except you're saying it may be subdivided, could that be tied to the subdivision approval? That there be a.
In that case, it would be, but not necessarily.
Or maybe subdivided or developed, and a management plan for vegetation to approve and implement. And I would imagine that the, that the professional help that helps this person build a house will provide a plan that they're going to reseed, and whatever they want put in it, if the plan, if this group approves it, it's a go.
Yeah, and, and wouldn't.
I mean, like landscaping plans, we never go into great details, although we have a, a appendix where you can find a lot about it.
Yeah, wouldn't approval be the planning board?
Yeah.
I mean, the intent here is just, if somebody has clear cut the land, you could still build on it.
Right.
But you have to provide some kind of a plan on how the, the trees will regrow outside the building envelope.
Right, again, Jason Stark said in most cases, um, natural regrowth is the preferred method. There are not massive tree plantings at the lawn in New Hampshire.
Yeah, if the planning board approves that, that would go.
Right. Yeah, there are not massive tree, tree plantings. Yeah, they're not massive tree, tree plantings that happen, they just let it regrow.
We used to plant.
From stumps.
Yeah, yeah, the.
They're just.
Only ones in the forest.
Right, right.
And, and that's fine too. We're, we're not trying to mandate how it regrows, just that you have to allow it to regrow.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and, and when the committee would, I mean, he's, that's the same, I don't plan to do a thing, if it's okay with the group, it's okay with the group.
Should it say must be approved by the planning board? Implement it as maybe is unnecessary, but. But should it state be approved by the planning board?
We've all, you know, we've done that with landscaping, and we've thought over these.
Okay, I guess that's all right.
Okay.
I guess that's all right.
You can, by me.
Yep, Dave.
I know we talked about this so fast, you're rubbing against agriculture all the time on this. You're saying you can't, you know, clear cut it, which means you can't have a garden. You can't have tennis court, you can't have any of those amenities that folks down on the edge of the lake can have. So you restrict it based on what occurred to people on, you know, on that, you know, watershed considerably.
Right.
Yet, just, you know, there's a statute says you can do these things. You can do blueberries, you know, you get a clear cut, you can do blueberries. Boberish blueberries anyway, and a good part of that, watershed used to be blueberries, Jesse Mountain was all blueberries and one that still is to some extent, but not on that slope, I don't think anymore. And, and I don't know if you could control that. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, you wanna, I'd wanna double check on all this with traffic planning or. Well, the front plan would be the first place I might wanna go, to see if you can restrict it. You say you're not restricting, but yet you are restricting.
Right. Right.
Well, the plan certainly is to protect the watershed through limited, limited timbering, cutting, for whatever reason.
You, you don't have that authority. The state has taken that authority.
With timbering, yeah.
So that's why you have to be careful. You're rubbing against the state laws.
Right.
You, it is true that you cut something off heavily, you'll get, the water will just slip right down pretty fast. You don't usually have any erosion, where you do have erosion, when it gets clear cut and then the roots are taken out.
Right, and your previous draft, you had the requirement that it be stumped, and that was a bad idea. I'd be looking that out.
So now you're gonna change the water quality much by saying somebody can't clear cut. And most of the times, they wouldn't clear cut everything anyway. But one of the forestry practices is often is to clear cut.
This, this doesn't restrict timbering, it, any timbering that's allowed by state law is allowed.
And clear cutting is one of those methods.
Okay, but.
To restart a whole new type of growth.
Yeah, but, but we're not saying you can't do that.
Okay, well, then what is this? Then what is the drawing on the board? That's saying where, where you can, that's, that's saying where you can and cannot cut.
But you're talking about subdivision, that's not, not a timbering process.
What if I have a wood stove? I have a wood stove that I burn on my house, I wanna cut down ten trees to, every year to power my wood stove for the year. That's, that's timbering.
Not clear cutting.
No, but.
See, down along the lake, they're, they're restricted. They're about, what, fifty feet in, you know, I've got anything?
No, there's the whole Shoreland Protection Act.
Yeah.
Right.
Up to a hundred and fifty feet.
Seven hundred.
Yeah, they're different, yeah, there's.
It's protected.
So.
So we are restricting it, that's what I'm saying.
But you can't, because you've got a very, you're allowed to, yeah, a very good reason there.
Yeah.
Very, because you're so close to the rim of the lake, you know, it wouldn't be effective.
To get back to this, I, I don't know, Jeff, did you capture what the, the group, oh, sorry, the board? Wants for topping and the, and the lit of that discussed.
No, we didn't finalize, but, but what I took away is that I think there's agreement, it's too bad we can't erase.
You can.
But not with what we've got in front of us. I think what we said.
The wetter is an alcohol. Wet should just come off with my fingers.
It sounded to me like agreement was, you would not clear cut at all, but the twenty-five foot clear cut would come out.
Right.
So there goes the picture. So who's gonna draw this picture? Because I got this out of the book.
Now, now we're at a point where.
Now, sorry, I have to do some drafting. Do we have a.
Sing it.
Oh, look at that.
It's just not dry. There we go. I know what I heard.
I think we're just at the, at the, at the picture.
From the width of the building.
Yeah, no more than fifty feet.
Going out forty-five degrees can be topped. The entire width of the building, from the building envelope to the edge of the property can be topped. But, but we got rid of the clear cut, because that didn't seem to make a lot of sense.
And, and there was some discussion about, was there an upper limit to, to, to the length of, of the building?
No more than fifty feet.
Yeah, the building, but, yeah, the width of the building not to exceed it, or not to exceed fifty feet.
The building is a hundred feet.
The top, the building could exceed it, but the top.
Right, right.
So maximum.
Topping width.
Fifty feet.
A topping width, not the building.
Right, right, right.
Right, right.
So it's, it's the building not to exceed fifty feet.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we'll make that change.
And there is no clear cutting then?
No clear cutting to the ground, no.
For, no, 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 it's not, you're still doing forestry practices, which couldn't be clear cut.
Right. No, but you're.
Well, but see, but forestry is, is, is different than a subdivision.
I understand.
If you've got a subdivision.
You said no clear cut, and that's not actually correct, because forestry could.
This kind of development may not happen in a subdivision. If you want, if I, if I own one lot, and I wanna put one house on that one lot, that's not a subdivision. Even if it's a six acre lot, or a hundred acre lot, I own a lot on the ridge line.
That gentleman from the, through the Timberman's Association.
Yeah.
Said it was fine if, if, you know, if it did not include timber.
Right, you wanted to take the whole forestry paragraph out, scratch it completely.
Yeah, but we will. Yeah, but, but if it's, if it's a, if it's a building, not, not a, a, a piece of land used for forestry.
Right.
You know, you're now saying, well, one big lot and one big house, then you could clear the whole thing, clear cut it, because you'd call it forestry.
Well, no, no, I think we're making an assumption that's not true. That what, what, what this currently says is the building envelope, and I've forgotten the exact dimensions, but we give dimensions of the building envelope surrounding the building.
Right.
It says that within the building envelope, clear cutting is allowed.
Okay.
It also is now gonna say to reflect this for what can be topped.
Right.
What can happen here is not addressed. We don't say you can't cut trees here. Doesn't say that. Just says this is the building envelope where clear cutting is allowed. So we didn't say you can't cut trees here. Now, that's kind of an omission more than anything, but, but, but if you read it, it doesn't say you can't cut trees in that area. I don't know, we should handle that, I'm not, and addresses what you're saying, that you can't tell people you can't cut trees, or clear blueberries, or whatever.
This is, that, this is very common, I see this a lot in deed restrictions, covenants, and homeowners associations do this often. There are several things that go at the same time. Like, so you run close by.
Well.
They can cut any trees.
Your comment, Jeff, it, it's said in a different way, because it says a building envelope in which clear cutting is permitted. It's a rectangle, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So.
But it doesn't say that outside the building envelope, you cannot cut trees.
Yeah, well, that's, that's an interesting point.
That's a pretty very good thing. Then, if you can't do, if it doesn't say you can't do it, that means you can.
You can.
Well, but it says a clear cutting is permitted in, in a building envelope, so.
Right.
You, you certainly can't, I would read it, you can't do clear cutting, whether you can take some trees out. It, it's silent.
You can do forestry practices, you can do forestry practices.
Yeah, I think that needs to be clarified some still.
So, you, you want to propose something?
Not really.
You know, you missed, again, because of time cables, you know?
Yeah, I know.
Well, I think, you know, I think you're getting close.
Yeah.
You got two or three things to work on.
I think if you make these modifications and send it back out to Jason Stock for comments, then they could probably come back.
Why are we picking one person to, to do that? You know, to me, he is a, represents an organization that promotes certain things, rather than an impartial judge.
Well, he's, he's an advocate for correct forestry practices in the state.
Well, we're taking.
He's an advocate for timber. Well, yeah, just, good point. I mean, your point's well taken. The issue though is that he is valuable in RSA, relative RSA laws to forestry, and where he's pointed those out, that is of value to shaping this correctly. Where it is an opinion as opposed to a requirement, you can accept or reject.
Right, you don't have to accept everything he says, but I think his opinion is worthwhile.
Well, there are other foresters too, you know, there's foresters who are independent and who work for the, for the state.
Use whatever resource you want.
Yeah.
But include him.
Well, there's another resource that we used before, when we had, we thought we were having issues with agriculture in town, and we were glad we did, that was the Farm Bureau.
Yeah.
And that was Paul Johnson. I think he still goes out and speaks to planning boards, if they invite him to talk about all the legislation, and we were glad we did.
Right.
Because we learned what we can do, can't do.
And, and, and you know, we've used a lot, and I don't know if you have in the last year, but we used to use the municipal association for actual legal opinions, instead of paying the lawyer, we used to call in them.
Yeah.
For, for questions, so.
Well.
We can, we can make these changes. I think the, the one difficult thing facing us, Paul, is how to word what can and cannot be done in that area.
Outside, inside, yeah, outside the building envelope.
Well, how about inside, you said permitted only.
How about what?
Say permitted only. Since we say it's permitted, why don't you just add the word only to it?
Well, we, we don't say what is or is not permitted in that remaining area.
Outside of the building envelope, which you, which you're allowed to clear cut.
Right.
We, well, we, you know, we do say that the. Well, it's, it's, it's very interesting, because in the design requirements and guidelines, we, we talk that clear cutting is permitted within the building envelope. Then we talk about what can be done to develop views, and we've covered that. And after that, which would be number four, clear cutting of the twenty-four foot wide corridor is permitted for the construction of a single driveway.
Right.
Up to twelve feet in width. Corridors for utilities may be established as necessary for the provision of these services. And then it says a visioned buffer of twenty-five feet or more shall be maintained between the building envelope and the logline.
Okay, so we have another line around the, around that.
Then we talk about that, hopefully, boundaries would be offset to, to prevent single, single lines of trees in single open areas. And what about the height of the buildings at fifty feet and.
Right.
So do we need to add something about maintenance of the forest or something?
No, we just need to clarify what you can and can't do outside the view area.
Right.
Well, so, I mean, this, this, what, what you can do, right?
But it, but it really doesn't address that question.
Right, it addresses most of it, but it's still, there's still a middle ground in there between the step back, twenty-five foot step back from the boundary line. And the building envelope, and the view shed going downhill. There's still a U-shaped bubble in there that's not defined.
So what is the wish of the group? Or, sorry?
I'm not a forester, and I don't know the forestry laws, so I'm reluctant to say the language, that's my problem. That's why I think a forester should be consulted. Maybe there's a forestry practice with a definition that doesn't include clear cutting. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, couldn't we just say that?
Some kind of forestry, whatever you, technique you wanna call it, or is called, that does not include clear cutting.
Right. The remaining land.
I don't know, that's the problem, I don't know the answer.
The remaining land may not be clear cut, but may be used according to state law for any other purpose, but it may not be clear cut.
Right.
Doesn't that become a problem of the appearance that you're concerned with?
Yeah, yeah.
So you haven't really created?
I don't know, yeah.
The other thing is, as far as agriculture anyway, is you're talking about forestry, but if I wanna raise sheep, which we have to use, clear cut eighty-five percent of it.
Right.
About a hundred fifty years ago, for the sheep, specifically for sheep.
Yeah.
Raise a sheep, am I?
But these are four to six acre parcels, are we gonna raise sheep on four to six acres?
I did it, yeah.
Well, and, and that allows you.
That's minimum lot size.
Because you can do that down in our residential district. It's, you know, that's why we have a board exactly what it says in the.
You come into the subdivision plan, I don't doubt that you probably can get people to put restrictions in there, you know, for, if the planning board asks to have restrictions placed on the park, it's a good chance you did. Do it, I'm not sure.
But the only.
I'll do it through ordinance.
The only restriction that exists in the ordinance is, you know, no pigs if your, if your butter objects. Oh, no, two hundred fifty feet, two hundred fifty feet from a butter if the objects are at the bed end. And otherwise, anybody can raise chickens or whatever, any lot anywhere.
Yeah, okay, all right, so we, so we need to address that. Okay. I think you, you know, go back and you want to work a couple more details on it, I think you're almost there. And you still have, you know, I mean, our next regular meeting is December, I think, I think it was.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Use the resources you want, I think the suggestion for the department is, is obvious too.
Would you like to contact the town forester and see if you would recommend management practices for timber?
That's all.
Did you hear what she said?
No.
Do you, do, Laura just asked me if I want her to contact the town forester to attend the next meeting to make comments on this.
We have a town forester?
We have a.
On call, right, sort of?
Well, my only concern is keep, keep timelines in, in mind, and if there are issues, we could, we can.
You can attend the next meeting.
Or how about if Paul and I meet with him before the next meeting and rate it correctly?
Yeah.
And bring it to the meeting.
What?
I, I can call him and ask him.
Sure, that, that can work.
Happy to have his input and have him part of it, it's just why wait two weeks and then have to redo it again?
Yeah, I'd much rather do it between meetings than afterwards, because you, you got to try to come to a conclusion if you plan for any action.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Can, can I ask one last question about this? Just going forward, do we know yet, we talked last time about what is the deadline for this to be completed and have the public hearing and all the rest?
Right.
And it's in January, but do we know when that is that?
Did you come up with a date?
I will check with Stephanie, I know she.
Yeah, look on the NHMA New Hampshire Municipal Association website for their calendar, they'll tell you where. Oracles have to be filed and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
How, how much before? Public hearings and all that.
Will they call and just talk to us and bring up to our?
Yeah, I know, but if they need to know, quickly, they can look on the website and see all that information on the NHMA New Hampshire Municipal Association.
Yeah, I know, but if they need to know quickly, they can look on the website and see all that information on the NHMA, New Hampshire Municipal Association.
Because I think, you know, that's the consensus, you wanna bring it up. I also think also, come December, you know, this meeting might not be placed when it's scheduled, because of ten inches of snow outside.
Right.
So-
Well, we can always schedule one emergency meeting if we need to do that.
You're a pessimist, Paul.
I've seen that before. Before you run out of time.
Okay.
No, it's your friend, just keep it on track, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
If I, if I may?
Sure.
Just, uh, some of that discussion before that I guess might get helpfully clarified with the town forester. I just wanna underscore that the purpose of that ordinance also is to protect the water quality of the lake. So when you're talking about how much clear cutting, or totally creating a field where there's now a forest, or whatever have you, you've better realize the repercussions that it would have on the lake.
Right.
And so when you're doing this, don't forget to keep that, that goal in mind, that we're trying to preserve the water quality. So that there might be land uses that do become more restrictive, because if they were to happen, they would negatively impact the, the lake's water quality. So just, I don't know, just when you're, you're meeting with the town forester, and you've got that gray area, just don't forget the goal of the whole ordinance in terms of maintaining land uses that are going to result in the best water quality possible.
Okay.
You can get some information on that by looking at the Merrimine Lake Association's water quality over the years. I think they go back quite a ways.
Yeah, we, we, we do, but also, there's, there's, there's been a lot of work done about, yeah. If you have X percentage of impervious surfaces in a given watershed, then you're gonna have, expect X amount of, uh, water quality results.
Right.
So you just wanna make sure, so, so that's why you, regardless of, of our water quality data over the years, there's been a lot of research done that says, like, eight percent of a watershed, once that all becomes impervious, you're going to have definite negative water quality on the, on the stream in that watershed.
But I'm not, the, the clear cut is not an impervious issue.
Right, I was, I was, I was gonna say, there's a difference there.
Yeah, exactly.
If you can go back far enough in those, that data, you can go back when Jesse Mountain was entirely clear cut, and see if the water quality was poorer than it is now. And that would tell you something.
Well, I, I think one difference between clear cut as a forestry practice and clear cut for a building lot, is that as a forestry practice, after the clear cut, you want it to grow back.
Right.
You're trying to, you know, because then you wanna be able to cut again, so it's, it's for forestry. If it's for a building envelope, if you cut, it's probably not gonna, it's gonna be lawn, or whatever have you, right? It's not gonna grow back. So that's gonna, that's gonna impact the hydrology differently and the water quality differently. I'm just, I'm, all I'm trying to say is, I'm not trying to be definitive at all, I'm just saying that, as, as you discussed with the town forester, just in working on this, always keep in mind that the end goal is the water quality. That's all. I just wanted to underscore that, that's.
Okay.
Sure.
I agree.
Thanks.
Very good.
To clarify on the town forester thing, is, there's a fellow that's a forester, or used to be a forester, anyway. He's Dennis Terrell, folks may know him. And he does work for the town every once in a while, but it's very limited what he does. Okay, it's mostly about the assessments and the, on the cutting, timber cutting.
He was more of a tax assessment.
Keeps an eye on it.
Right.
If somebody complains and says, well, I don't know if they're doing a good job up there, forestry practices, he's the kinda guy you could take a look at. And, but remember, right now it's hunting season, and he is a, if you don't get a Terrell. He's always shot one deer so badly.
No, no.
Old boy one.
He's shot more than that.
Oh.
May, may not all be in New Hampshire.
Two of them.
Might not have all been in New Hampshire.
It's not Dennis Terrell.
Oh, oh, yeah, I know.
We, pretty much-
Peter Farrell.
You know, Farrell's who we're talking about.
No, but there's, no, but there's Dennis Terrell.
He is correct.
Terrell, but he's not a town forester.
No, he's not a town, but he-
Been for five years.
But he has done some forestry.
Okay, we're talking about Dennis.
Well, I, I, oh, you lost the whole-
Peter Farrell.
Peter Farrell. That's who we're referring to.
Right.
But both of them have forest experience.
We're referring to Peter Farrell now.
Considerable.
Okay.
Peter's very good.
We're pretty much, you're pretty much set then, in terms of-
Yeah.
So, next revision?
Yeah.
So, I guess what we're gonna do is do a revision, and then try to meet with the forester and see whether he likes what, what's said.
I would, I would suggest you reach out to the farm too, I think Johnson, he said his name was, just to get his input.
Who, who's that?
The farm, there's somebody that David had on the, Farm Bureau.
Also fine.
Just has another input.
Well-
That's probably a bad.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about all the inputs, right? Because, because, uh, you know, we're, we are part of the district of Moose Mountain Regional Greenways, and they have forestry resources, they are practices.
You know, not defining who you should use as a resource, just suggesting you make sure your resources are-
The key is that we just get it done in the next few weeks, and meet with somebody to-
Do you want Laura to contact Peter Farrell? Yes, no?
Yes, yes, please.
Yeah, if, if we can set up a time to, I don't know what this time is, yeah, sure, we'd like to, to chat, but we gotta write it up first.
Yeah.
So, not in this, not this week.
Well, I don't think we necessarily have to make all the changes. What we need is input, we need advice and guidance, and we can make the changes based on that.
I think you can see what you have, and make the comment.
Right, this is already different than what we see.
I would say sooner than later.
Yeah.
I can email this draft to him and ask him to-
Well, but it's already significantly changed.
That's okay, that's okay, we, we, we need his input, and waiting is, is only gonna slow us down, Paul.
Yeah.
Let's let him look at it.
Okay.
As long as you know that it's, it's no longer in effect. Because he, he'll probably come up with the same criticisms that your guy did, that we don't longer have that.
No, no, she's gonna send him this, this latest version.
No, but the latest version, we just changed it, there's no more language about agriculture and forestry, that's now recording, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Because he's gonna pick up, pick up on that.
Okay.
It's okay.
You guys figure out when you wanna contact.
Okay, when, we'll pick you back.
Let Laura-
Two weeks, two weeks? You come back in two weeks with the next draft?
Yes.
Second?
Okay.
Yeah, the next regular schedule is the sixth.
Right, with the next meeting.
Next regularly scheduled.
First Tuesday.
First Tuesday, December.
And what about the one in, or later in November?
That's just a work.
Not a workshop specific, no.
Very limited times.
Your next meeting is Tuesday, in December.
Well, I'm just thinking about that time, so yeah.
I think you're okay.
Scott, can I comment?
Sure.
Some of the people who've heard it here-
Sure.
As you conclude this part of the agenda, I'm Chris Carron from Thirty South Shore Road, and, um, these are numbered members and board of directors from the Merrimine Lake Association. And we just wanna make sure that you got the October nineteenth letter from our president, Bill Bassett, in support of the concept of-
Yes, we did, absolutely.
Great, okay. So, just-
Understood.
Jan Bell, John Chaitlin, Nancy Bryant, Chris Carron, all on the board of directors. Eight people in the audience tonight who are very much in favor of this great concept of preserving the vistas, the watershed, and still permitting some reasonable development.
All right.
So we appreciate your attention to this, and we hope we can move it forward for the voters to consider it.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item.
Well, as I said, given the, given the hour-
Let's move forward.
There are significant changes in the minutes.
Okay.
We're wondering if the best is not-
Why just postpone that and come back at it in the next session, where I'll have a chance to put them all in, in written form, you'll see it. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so. Thank you for coming.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
Check your listeners?
Right.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
No, we're meaning one you needed.
Hand it over by briefcase.
I know that was your bag.
We have minutes, mail and correspondence left on our agenda. Does that gonna take us fifteen minutes?
Minutes, I'm suggesting that there are considerable changes that are gonna take-
Then why don't you submit your changes to Laura, and we'll go ahead for the next time?
Right.
Both sets?
Pardon?
Both sets of minutes?
Both sets, yeah. Particularly the, the eighteenth of the month.
All right, let's do that, quiet please, yeah, Paul.
Both sets.
Okay, so we're gonna postpone the minutes. Let's just go through-
We have, but I think it's just gonna take a long time to do.
Then we'll go to mail. Uh, we've got, the, we've already talked about the accessory dwelling unit meeting.
How many wanted to go to that, like, R S C?
I do.
One, two, three? And we have Ron Gale wanting me to forward the fourth annual Moose Mountain Annual Conservation Mixer is at the Wakefield Opera House, Saturday, December third, eight thirty a.m. to noon. Continental breakfast, coffee and tea will be served. I think everyone has that invitation in their papers.
Yes.
So, you can all decide whether or not-
I'll give you a copy very briefly.
You want to do that. He needs a copy of all rights and ordinances too, a three-ring binder, just the standard thing. We have a crazy busy meeting next time. Three public hearings, next time. So how are we gonna fit you in with three public hearings?
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, you don't know how long any one of them will take.
Right. We'll just have to try it. If you don't fit, then may, and we find out that we're running up against a deadline, then we can always call a second meeting. A third meeting of the month, or something, to move forward. We can all, we can call an extra meeting if we need to.
Call a special meeting.
Special meeting, okay?
So, um, so the next time, when is this, the, the thing that we just talked about, when is that scheduled for now, the twenty-nine?
First Tuesday.
No.
First Tuesday in December.
December sixth.
Sixth.
December sixth, so, so, like, like if you run out of time.
Right. Then we'll, during that meeting, we'll find time for you. Okay, we'll make time for you.
Scott, what are the three hearings? I know one, Penny Lane.
Penny Lane, we got, didn't we get another packet for green?
Yeah, green oak.
Green oak?
But that's not a public hearing.
Isn't it?
We haven't heard that. We, um-
It's a-
Isn't that a public hearing? We have an application for excavation.
Have we accepted the application, though?
No, that's what it all is.
But that's not a public hearing, though. I mean, we're just gonna review the application and accept the application, right? And then, are you posting that as a public hearing?
I thought that's what she basically, I mean, an application, she posted as public hearing.
Actually, it's for an excavation permit?
An excavation permit?
Right.
You've been additionally using excavation permit and a law violation adjustment.
Right.
And a law adjustment, and he's, well, he did a, um, he did a preliminary. Yeah.
Right, so those ones may go pretty quick.
That's what I say, you don't know.
They may go pretty quick.
Scott, Bad hasn't been in, has he? Did he present anything?
Bad hasn't been before you.
Yeah, no, he hasn't.
He submitted an application claim.
Right.
So we would need to walk the whole application and decide if it was complete.
Right.
And accept it.
Right.
After that, schedule a public hearing? Or you're, you're thinking we'll do both in the same?
I think we're doing both at the same time. Accept the application, go through it, and approve it. I don't need it, not yet, so. So. I think that's, I think that's it, we have a busy, we'll have a busy meeting next time.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else? One once, going twice?
Move to a journey.
Mail?
We, that was it.
No mail, okay.
Move to a journey.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.[1795.14]